Calling our meeting to order for Tuesday, November 27th. We're having a special meeting. We're in the community meeting room. It's a bit after 5:00. Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember DuBois, Vice Mayor Filseth, Councilmember Fine, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Koo, Mayor Niss, Councilmember Scharf, Councilmember Tanaka, Councilmember Walbach. Six present.
Thank you. And we have our first interviewee on the Skype. Hi, David.
Hi there.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. This is your opportunity to talk with us. You may give an introductory statement if you wish. You don't have to. And then we will have an opportunity to quiz you and you will have a few minutes for a closing statement. So can you see us?
Yes, I can. And I really appreciate you being able to accommodate me in Los Angeles. Thank you so much. And I really appreciate the past three years being on the commission. And I think we've accomplished a whole lot. And I look forward to accomplishing a lot more. I was really happy to be part of the 20-year master plan. That was a big, big deal. And it took a lot of effort from us and from you to finally get that path. And I hope we can do a lot of the things that are on the list.
Okay. Are you ready for us to ask you questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Who would like to start?
I'll kick it off. So David, thank you again for applying. Two quick questions. One, could you kind of give us just an overview of what you think the funding strategy is for the Parks Plan? And then the second one's a little different. I've been really surprised how much we've seen interest in pickleball, for instance, and people showing up and waving their paddles and things like that. And I'm just wondering, like, what do you think else is out there in the community that we may not know of? A sport, an activity that's kind of happening in Palo Alto that we should be planning for?
All right. So as far as the funding is concerned, it's been very difficult to ask for funding if we don't know how much we need. And I think that the biggest challenge is going to be determining how much we need. And if we have that, I think that going for a bond measure, parks seem to be pretty popular with the population and may be able to use a bond measure to do it. Trying to get everybody to donate money or to spend on the amount of CIP dollars that you can provide us seems to be an ongoing challenge. But right now, that's the sole source of funds. And what we've been trying to do is work within that process to try to bite off some of these items. The problem is that if some of the big-ticket items, like the Coverley Master Plan, building a gym, and buying property like the AT&amp;T property next to Bolware Park, they take a lot of money. And it's not something that you're going to be able to get in a CIP budget. So we're probably going to have to do a bond measure. But we have to really know how much we're talking about. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is, as far as the pickleball is concerned, I have always thought that if we can get more people out of their house, out of their cars, and into the parks, that would be a great thing. And so I think that if we can have more events in the open spaces and in the parks, like the music or like the Fun Run in October out at Bixby Park, things like that, that that would be great. But as far as people coming to us and saying they want something, obviously, what you're going to deal with next week, I think, the aquatics and Rinconyada, that's the big one right now. And I hope we can deal with that. And if we can get another pool, it will make things a little easier. But I don't know of any giant tidal wave like the pickleball was. Do you?
Not exactly. It was just something new to me. So that was interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could I jump in with something? Because you talked about doing the hike essentially from the foothills to the ocean. Did you do that all in one day?
No, that was three days. And it was from Arastodaro Preserve up to the top of Black Mountain camping in that site. And then from there to Portola State Park on the second night and the third night to Butano State Park. And the whole reason for that walk was to show Palo Alton and also our neighbors how connected our open spaces are. And anything we can do to enhance that and to publicize it, I think, is a wonderful thing, not only for the city, but also for the surrounding neighbors and partners. And there were 10 parks, six different agencies, that we walked through. So it's a big deal.
We used to talk about that a lot and say there'd be a time when you could go from Arastodaro. And I'm sure nobody asked you for your card as you went through to indicate you were a Palo Alton. You just kept on going, right?
If you go from Arastodaro into foothills and keep on walking, people outside of the city are allowed to go in and through.
Right.
But that one spot, because you can't ride a bicycle through foothills because the trails are not big, you can't make it an official regional trail like the Trail in Cubertino. It has to be available to bikes. And so we have our limitations, but still, it's as good as -- it's really good right now for pedestrians.
Thanks. I haven't talked to anyone who's actually done that. So you must have backpacked and camped out and so forth.
Exactly.
Okay. Someone else want to jump in? Karen? It's a little bit -- there may be a slight pause. It's just a little -- the Skype is a little jerky.
Yeah, I noticed you're a little fuzzy. And it's not my glasses. But I can see you just --
Could be us that's fuzzy, though. We were here late last night. Thank you for reporting back on your hike and any suggestions you have to enhance connectivity. That would be great. And then I wanted to ask you about -- you mentioned both the Frye's Site and Coverley. And they're both, in one fashion or another, master plans. And what do you see in terms of recreation there? You mentioned a pool. You talk about park space. What do you -- do you have any kind of vision for those? And are you coming to those various meetings?
Yes, I'm trying to have my input in both of those situations. Not the Frye's one. The Frye's one, Keith Rechtal is the representative to that Ventura neighborhood. But I've certainly passed over a number of meetings for how we can purchase that AT&amp;T property and work that whole issue. But it's a little premature.
Can I just interrupt with one question? Are you familiar with the Quimby Act?
No.
I would suggest that you familiarize yourself with it as a Parks and Rec Commissioner.
All right. I'll make a note. As far as the Coverley Master Plan, I've been very active in that, trying to -- I live right behind Coverley. And so getting all my neighbors in Green Meadow and Greendale to show up, and I think 250 people showed up at the last meetings to give their input, I'm very interested in that. And I'm very hopeful that we can have a -- that we can keep all of the fields. And I know that we've been working diligently on the track and redoing the field back there, regardless of what happens to the rest of the Coverley site. And I'm also very aware that the Coverley site is the only entrance into the Greendale School site. And so that neighbor has to be taken into consideration as well. So I'm very hopeful that the staff and I'm confident will drive us to a decision by the end of May. Because a number of our neighbors were quite turned off by the idea of yet another Coverley Master Plan effort because two or three of them have fallen by the wayside over the past decade. So this time, I promise them.
I'm going to have to bring this to a stop. Believe it or not, your 10 minutes are up. We so appreciate your coming in by Skype. I know it's not always easy. But we will maybe see you next week. And thank you again for reapplying.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye.
All right, bye.
So with that, is Ann Krebs coming in as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm getting a lot of messages asking if we are televising this. And we are not, correct?
Because we currently, with our broadcast equipment, can only broadcast one meeting at a time. So we're recording this, broadcasting Parks and Rec.
Okay. So, all right. There are three messages. It's not on TV.
So unfortunately, we don't record two meetings at a time. We can only broadcast one.
Okay.
It'll be Sunday after broadcast to get through.
There we are.
Hi, Ann.
Hello.
So, there we go.
There we go. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Hey, Ann, back up a little bit. Yeah, yeah. You're kind of -- just sort of back away a little bit and get comfortable.
So it's always nice when the technology works, is it not?
It is working. Welcome.
Thank you.
So you can dive right in. You know, say whatever introductory words you'd like to say. You have 10 minutes. Cory has the timer in his hand. So you can talk as long as you wish and then we'll jump in.
It's like a swimming meet. I didn't realize that there was remarks that were needed. But anyhow, I'm happy to jump in.
You don't have to make any if you don't want to.
I have really enjoyed being on the commission for the last three years. I think we've done some really fun things and accomplished a little bit, specifically in the areas of the dog park, which everybody loves. And that was such a fun project to do. And Karen, it was so fun to have you be there and open it up and everything with your grand dog or whatever that was. And also, the whole initiative with pickleball, I found very, very interesting, very good for our community and certainly good for the senior community because a lot of seniors are playing pickleball now because their knees are tired. And it's a really great group. And I'm very hopeful that we can really designate some tennis courts to be specific to pickleball. I'm also excited about working on restrooms, more restrooms in the park, which seemed to be something that the population wanted. I've been frustrated sometimes by the length of the meetings that go kind of on and on and on. And I'm sure you guys can relate to that. I'd love to find a way to make it easier for Palo Alto people to contribute to projects, especially in the park that we have in the master plan, like big projects and little projects. I think that would be really useful. And I know we've kind of run into some stumbling blocks with the attorney and whether it's appropriate or whether it's not. But I think that Palo Alto loves their parks and I think would be very willing to contribute to some projects to get them started. I also, you all know, am very fond of seeing the Coverley project move forward. And I am pleased to see how the consultant's doing and engaging the community. I'm hopeful that we're getting the ideas of all the community and just not a few people. And I continue to be interested to know what we could do with the eight or nine acres that actually belong to the city of Palo Alto. Because it seems like the school district has some challenges figuring out how to make it flexible enough to be potentially a school in the future. So I think I would stop right there except for to say one thing that I'm concerned. I asked David about the number of women who had applied for the commission, and I guess that there was only one. And I find that to be very sad and really very challenging because it shouldn't just be me from my vantage point. It should be some of our younger population who have kids at school and who really love fitness and recreation and parks. And so I hope that somehow we all can work together to do a better job to get more women to apply to the recreation commission next -- or Parks and Recreation next year. So I'll stop right there. How are we doing on time? Is that five minutes?
Seven.
Seven? Oops.
Seven left. Phew. Okay, who would like to start? Karen?
So thank you for your service and your interest and your dedication to this. Two questions. One is, you've been on the commission a while and thank you very much. But I did note that on your application, you said you were aware of the documents that are listed here, like the Parks Master Plan, I mean, like the Park Dedication Ordinance, the Baylands Master Plan and such. But you hadn't familiarized yourself with them. And if you want to comment on that. And then the other is, you of all people, when you talk about Coverley, what are your thoughts about a pool in the southern part of Palo Alto?
Let me answer the first question first. I believe that is from the first application that I hadn't familiarized myself with the Parks Master Plan. So I'm hoping that you all are looking at the most current application. Because I think that I actually know that I was part of the master plan. So maybe I pushed the wrong button. I don't know. We had some trouble with my email and the city server, which David helped me figure out.
Okay. Well, then, thank you for --
And then to answer your question about swimming, while David looks to see about the application, I do think it would be great to have a pool in South Palo Alto. And I think it would be great to have a pool as part of the new Coverley complex, along with a gym.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for clarifying about the documents, too.
Thank you for asking the question.
Okay. Anyone else? Lydia?
Thank you for serving Commissioner Krebs. I wanted to ask, you noted here that you coordinated the senior games. Is there any chance that that's something that you might be able to do again?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? It wasn't really clear.
It sounded like what you put down, it seems you had coordinated or had a hand in putting together the senior games. I think it was sometime -- the Stanford -- oh, they chaired the Bay Area Senior Games. It's an annual event. Is that something that you might be able to do here in Palo Alto?
Yes, it actually happens in Palo Alto.
It does.
Now that we're not at Stanford anymore, Stanford has kind of decided that they only want to host campus groups instead of seniors, who are athletes as well, which is unfortunate. But Palo Alto is now hosting our volleyball tournament, our basketball tournament, our swimming event that's in the springtime. We're actually having a swimming event in a couple of days and doing it up in San Francisco because we needed an indoor pool. And then Palo Alto also hosts the pickleball. And we will be playing golf at the new golf course, the New Links, in the springtime. So Palo Alto has been great to the senior games and we so appreciate it.
Oh, I'm very happy to hear about that. I'll keep my eyes out for next year's springtime. Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Looking for another question. Adrian?
So thank you very much for your service and for applying again. Quick question. So you mentioned in an issue that came before the commission and that was of interest to you. And also in your comments, you mentioned about bathrooms of the parks. And in your notes, you mentioned solutions for trash and garbage in our parks. And it's actually something I've kind of noticed recently. Some of our parks do have a bit of trash in places. And I've heard from a couple of community members about that. And then the restrooms also, you know, it's been a bit of a bugaboo for a while. Some people want them. Some people think it's a terrible idea. So I'm just wondering if you can just explain a little bit how you'd like to address those issues.
Sure. Well, you know, I'm part of the ad hoc committee about the bathrooms in the parks. It was dog parks and now it's bathrooms in the parks. And Darren Anderson is doing a really great job with some community, scheduling some community outreach with parks that he feels like are prime prospects for the next CIP round of funding for bathrooms in the parks. So I'll leave that at that. But I think we've heard from a lot of community members that it would be really nice to have bathrooms in the parks. And now with all of the new kind of, you can lock the door electronically, turn the lights on electronically and do that. But I think people used to worry about bathrooms in the park probably are controllable with technology. So that's first. And the other thing that I'm always interested in is getting the neighborhood groups or making it possible for people who are using the parks to pick up after themselves. I mean, they just shouldn't come and leave the park and leave it in a mess for the contractors to go and take care of it after the weekend. And I think it's only human nature that when you see a garbage can that's overflowing, you don't really try very hard because you think, well, you know, it's overflowing. What else? I can only add to that. So it would be great if somehow we could do a public education campaign and see if this worked and just said, hey, you know, when you come to the park, either there are garbage bags available, kind of like there are dog bags available in the park to pick up after yourselves and see how that works for six months. And maybe it's a crazy idea. We're using it at our Rich May Field over in East Palo Alto that I've been involved in. And our attendant meets our field users every night and gives them a garbage bag. And we are seeing lots less trash when they leave. But partly because they know that maybe they're going to get a security deposit or something if they don't clean up after themselves. So we, you know, we have some ways. I'm just thinking that it would be really fun to try that and see if we could help people understand that it's really important to just pick up after yourselves.
I think you're getting a lot of nods right here. Thank you.
So, you know, Ann, I'm hearing your comments about women not applying, which is kind of consistent across the board for women in office, for women, you know, in CEO jobs, whatever it might be. But how do you think we could get some more women to apply?
Well, I think that we who are serving on commissions have to make a concerted effort on a one-to-one basis to meet with people and try to share the importance of the jobs that the commissions do. And I think that sometimes if something comes out in the paper or in an email, it's easy to say, that doesn't apply to me. But if somebody that you respect or somebody that you know that you think would be a good candidate, if you approach them and say, we'd really like to have you consider this, I think it would make a lot of difference.
I think that's the perfect note to end on. The timer just went off. 10 minutes flies, I know. Hard to believe it. Thank you so much for coming in by Skype. Thanks for serving on the commission especially. And we will look forward to the next steps. So appreciate it.
Well, thank you all very much. And to you guys, too, thank you very much for your service. And I know your meetings are a lot longer than ours are. Bye, everybody.
They certainly are. Thanks, Ann. Okay. And is the next person here? Okay. So Jeff Greenfield is here. Yes. We always get more for PTC, always. So you have 10 minutes. Cory has the timer. And when it goes off, it will go beep, 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 beep. Okay, greetings.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I've thoroughly enjoyed the past two years I've served on the Parks and Rec Commission, including last year as the vice chair. For me, it's the perfect encapsulation of my personal interests from community programs and field usage, especially soccer, where I've been very active in the community for 20 years, to open space stewardship, where I try and get out and hike in the local hills as often as possible, to caring for the trees. I do a lot for Canopy, to biking around town, to gardening. For me, Parks and Rec is the best job in the city. I appreciate the heavy lifting that all of you do on so many issues. But for me, I really enjoy the advocacy for our recreation programs and infrastructure and the stewardship of our open spaces and natural resource. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue the effort serving our community.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm going to ask one question first.
Sure.
What's your favorite park?
My favorite park? My favorite park is Foothills Park.
I think it's the favorite of many. Thanks. Eric?
What do you think the most important things to get done in the next couple of years on Parks and Rec are?
I'm sorry, the most important?
Yeah, what do you think the most important things to get done are in the next couple of years?
Well, Coverley is a big issue. It's kind of on the side of the purview of Parks and Rec. I don't think the commission is that actively involved with the process right now. I'd like to find a way to get better involvement. I think the biggest challenge for the Parks and Rec Commission, I mean, it's the fund commission. We do a lot of work on the activities that really make Palo Alto and are interesting, that bring the community here. But the biggest challenge to me is managing finite resources for a growing and evolving community. And I think the most challenging issues that hit the Parks and Rec Commission, such as the pickleball versus tennis is a good example of that. We have a tennis community that's been here for a long time. And we have a new sport that's wanting to use the same resources and has a lot of momentum and a lot of growth. And it's a tricky balance to figure out what is the right way to maintain -- to maintain the past usage and also look at the numbers of how to best serve the evolving community. And the immediate challenge in front of us with the swimming pool and Rinconada Masters, it fits that paradigm as well. It's a tough one.
You're welcome. Tom DuBois has just joined us. Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about a couple of things you listed. So the... You said the hydrology study is kind of a rare opportunity. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about what that is? And then also the community garden.
Sure. The hydrology study is... Refers to Buckeye Creek, which is the waterway running through Foothills Park. And a lot of you were just out at Foothills Park for the opening of the 10 and 1/2 acres, which is very exciting, or 7.7 acres. And that's just kind of the tip of the iceberg. We've had erosion and downcutting issues at Buckeye Creek, which is a channelized creek, which isn't natural. It was moved in its current location in sometime between the 20s and the 40s. And there used to be a creek that meandered through Wild Horse Valley and through Los Trampas Valley. And so the consultant that did the study recommends actually moving the creek back, restoring the creek to its origin... Roughly its original form. This would take roughly half of the width of the field area in Los Trampas Valley. So there'd still be half of the field would be maintained, but the rest of the field area would be kind of a meandering seasonal creek. And this is a wonderful, rare opportunity to add riparian environment. It doesn't come around long, very often. The full project, which would be Wild Horse Valley, Los Trampas, and the new area that was just opened up is over a $10 million project, and that's expensive and not the highest priority for the city. But it seems like there's a real opportunity for a donor or a group of donors to be able to make an investment in something that's really lasting. You know, it's... For the right person, it's a great opportunity. So that's really interesting to me. And the community gardens, we're close to being... Announcing a new community garden opening up in the church, which is across from Gunn, kind of between Gunn and Turman on Arastodaro. And that's in legal review right now. And so that's an area of the community that is underserved for community gardens.
How is that funded?
The church is looking to make the land available to us, to the city, to manage in a manner similar to how the current community gardens are managed. Right now, there's four gardens in the city. There's also a lot of interest from the Coverly process for adding community gardens there as well, which would be great.
Looking around. If not, I'll jump back in. There occasionally is discussion about, do we have enough parks? And as you know, we have 36 or 37, depending on how you count them. We now have a new little piece of land. Tell me what your response is to that. Not the technical one, the one that's, you know, for use and enjoyment.
No, the... The technical response... The technical response is in the master plan in terms of...
Right, right.
How close... The proximity of people to park. And that... There's merit to that. In general, I think particularly with the population growing in the community, we need to be on the lookout to add more park area when it makes sense. The property near the Fry's area, Ventura area, that could be added for additional parkland is something I strongly advocate considering. To answer your question more directly, more park... More parkland would be a plus for the city. I think we can use more. There's also discussion... There's always discussions on how you use the lands. There's the area out in the Baylands, which may be developed for more fields. And as we grow over time, we need that... We'll need that area. And if anything happened to Coverly, we would definitely need that area.
Yes, and I think some parks are just more popular than others. Johnson Park for kids is just amazing. And as you said, Foothill for you is just your cup of tea. So it's interesting who will seek out what particular park and use it.
And I could give you a top five or a top 10 too, but...
Lydia? Okay, either way.
So I'm just sitting here realizing, listening to you speak, that I don't think we've had a joint meeting with Parks and Rec for a while.
The last one we had was a year ago, September or August. And this is something that I brought up with staff over the last couple of months, and they've been working towards it. And then with... I don't think it's going to happen this year, but we're looking to move forward with it.
Don't think it is. And I hope you all do advocate for making sure that happens because it is one of the ways, if not the best way, for the councilmembers to hear what Parks and Rec priorities are and what the real issues are that you're facing and how, you know, you might get counsel or support from councilmembers. So, yeah, keep pushing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your support. I've mentioned it every month for the past few months, and I'll mention it again at our meeting tonight, so.
You know, that forest in Rinconada Park?
Yes.
It's really, really cute. Although right now the trees need a little tender loving care because they seem to be browning. But is there an opportunity of doing another forest in another park somewhere?
So another redwood forest is similar?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a redwood. It could be ginkgo trees, you know, I don't know. I mean, that would be really lovely, all the yellow.
I would advocate for doing something other than redwood trees.
Yes.
Redwood trees are much cherished in our community, and we take our name from one. But they're not the...
Not necessary.
They're not the best suited for our local land. And... But that is a great idea to look to add a rich forest. I mean, there are forest areas, like in Mitchell Park, there's...
Yeah, yeah. Not really.
Some close to East Meadow, there's...
There are some, yeah.
But not a magical forest like that one.
That kind, yeah. It would be lovely to see some more sprout up.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Oh, just two questions about accessibility to Foothills Park.
Yes.
And we have like 30 seconds, so I might not be able to get into it. One is the perennial question about whether we should allow greater access for non-Palo Alto residents, such as allowing people to drive in but pay a fee if they're not a Palo Alto resident. So you have to pay for parking, so that would encourage them to bike or coming through the back by walking. And then also the question about whether we could, at some point, not to have some kind of shuttle service that gets us up to the park for people who can't drive up there or bike up there easily.
Yep, longer, complex question for the community. One quick idea. And then there... I am on the Foothills Park ad hoc, and we have had discussions about this. But it came to our attention that students in the PAUSD who are not Palo Alto residents aren't currently allowed access... Officially allowed access to Foothills Park. So one kind of baby step to opening the door could potentially be to allow the families of PAUSD students to have access to Foothills Park, bringing a school ID card. This would primarily be Tinsley Act families and families of PAUSD employees.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service and appreciate your being here tonight in person. So we'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
And where is David? Caleb Weinstein?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Weinstein, Weinstein.
Good, welcome. We'll let you get settled and tell you that you have an opportunity to introduce yourself and give us any message you wish. But you have 10 minutes total, so leave a little time for us to ask you questions.
Sure, great. Well, thank you. My name's Caleb Weinstein. I have resided in Palo Alto going on two years now. Moved here from London, and before that, New York. My... I guess my interest in the Parks Council is my academic background and really what I did in university and college was I was an urban studies major and at Columbia College in New York. And during that time, I worked for the New York City Parks Department, both and several in three different areas. Probably spent about my second two years of college working part-time, you know, basically summers and during the week in the concessions department, which obviously ranged from everything from how do you license hot dog carts in front of the Metropolitan Museum of Art, which went for about $1 million a year, to golf course developments. The one I think I worked on is with our... With the current president and his organization. And to be very honest, that work in concession kind of drove me to work in business. Just kind of... I dealt... Because the other two parts I dealt with was I worked directly with the commissioner, Commissioner Henry Stern, who was commissioner under several administrations and did basically advanced communications and community outreach. And so I spent usually Saturdays during the summer with the commissioner, going out, doing community outreach, following up on the various constituent issues. And then the third area I dealt with was connected to concessions but on events. And how do you coordinate events in a public space? And what are all the issues you have to consider? The biggest event I worked on in probably the two years was that Disney did a screening of, I forget which film, but one of the classic films on the Great Lawn in Central Park. And how do you... And I went from there to Lollapalooza, which ran on Randall's Island, and acted as kind of the concessions manager, but dealing with all the constituent issues of how do you hold a concert in a park? How do you close the Great... You know, what are the issues when you close the Great Lawn? How many hours are you closing the Great Lawn? And for me, it was a part of the experience I really enjoyed in college. My thesis senior year was on public parks and the sharing of space. And, you know, I technically was a architecture or art history major where I studied the architecture really of parks and, you know, public use parks, Frederick Law Olmsted, manicured parks versus rustic parks, and how do you bring those experiences to bear in a community? I've seen just about everything you can possibly imagine go on in a park, for better or for worse. And, I mean, I think one of the best ones was dealing with concessions was doing vendor for a delicacy of Central America is barbecued guinea pig. And Flushing Meadows Park in Queens has a very large Latin American community who play football on the weekends or soccer. And having to actually work with the health department to actually execute vendor permits for that delicacy. So that was probably one of the more unique things, but ranging to, again, a Lollapalooza as a rock concert or dealing with Disney. And I guess my interest is to... I think parks are great meeting spaces. I think parks can drive community, can reflect architecture and art of our time and culture. And I'm interested in becoming an active member in the community and contributing from an area at least I have, you know, a background and experience in outside of my... What became my more professional life post-university.
So thanks so much for applying. I know there'll be lots of questions. There are about five minutes left, six minutes left? Great. Okay. I'll bet Karen would like to dive in, am I right?
Sure, why not? Well, thank you for applying. And how long have you been living here now?
Two years, going on two years.
Two years, okay. And I appreciate your interest and your experience both. And yet, the second question here talks about something that's recently come to the commission, and you put an NA there. So do you not watch commission meetings? Or what's your experience with our current Parks and Rec commission?
So I watch... I'll be honest with you. When I first moved, I watched the beginning. But I have not been an active, you know, watcher of the issues going on.
And how familiar are you with the complexity of issues that they deal with? I also noted that you had an NA after the documents that the Parks and Rec commission would use.
Well, certainly, I mean, I'm not... I can't say I have current level of experience with, you know, filings. You know, certainly, I did a lot of that work in, you know, past life. And, you know, obviously, the filings to do, you know, in New York City are obviously were thick and very mechanical and very, you know... You know, formulaic in forms. But you're absolutely right. I have not had recent experience in these issues.
Okay.
But dealing with forms is certainly... Agreements is something I've dealt with, you know, for the last 20-plus years.
Great, thank you. I see another hand flying up here, so I'll see you, right? Tom?
Yeah. So one issue that's come up recently is... Are you familiar with pickleball?
Like pickle... I mean, the... Yes, sure.
Yeah, so we have limited lighted tennis courts, and it's become a pretty heated discussion between tennis players and pickleball players since it's come to the Parks and Rec Commission. I mean, how would you approach an issue like that when you have a room full of people, both love their sport, and they want to use this resource?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think the... You have to be representative of your community, as I talked about the experience, you know, and unique delicacies. And I think you have to give, you know, resources that reflect the interests of the community. You obviously have to... You know, I would say, you know, you don't want tyranny of the minority, but you do have to, you know, reflect the interest and the concerns of the community overall. And I guess, you know, my initial thoughts on pickleball is it's typically, you know... Typically, you know, there's a certain... You know, it is... It is a... It can use the same resources as tennis. One thing I would wonder is if you do a test, you know, setup, and what will the actual usage be over time and to track that usage?
I mean, it's actually been really growing, the pickleball crew. And the tennis crew is used to using these courts. And so that was the conflict, like the pickleball crew is demanding more pickleball time, you know?
I mean, it's... I think it's representative of the constituency. Are they going to show up and use the resources? You can't have a pickleball court for one or two or four. I think four people usually play pickleball, I feel like. So I think it's about seeing who, you know, setting up, doing a test, see who comes, you know, and see, do you convert, you know, pickleball courts full-time?
Thank you very much for the application. So you mentioned some events you worked on, things like Lollapalooza, et cetera. I don't think Lollapalooza would fit here in Palo Alto. But I know some people have brought up the idea of increasing the types of events and frequency of events in Palo Alto parks and open spaces. And I'm just wondering if you have any ideas there about, you know, what would you like to see here in Palo Alto in terms of events?
Well, I think, you know, events are there to bring out the community, and to bring out the community in, I would say, a productive fashion. And you... I think the first concern is always, you know, the community invests in the infrastructure and the resources of the park. So your first question is always, what will the park look like where it is today versus where it will look tomorrow post-event? And ideally, you know, in my past experience, you basically, frankly, the underlying justification for closing access to the park in order to facilitate the event was that there would be improvements would be given to the park. And that was, for a short amount of time, we're going to restrict access in order to basically get funding to have an improvement. So I think there's one... That's the first question of how will this help the park in the long term or the medium to long term? The second is obviously, what is the experience? And is the experience reflective of interest in the community? You know, which I think that's a... That's a larger question, you know?
Just quickly. I really appreciated your reference to Olmsted. And when it comes to park planning, and we may have some opportunities here, would you... How would you apply or think about Olmsted in terms of or not park planning in Palo Alto?
Well, you know, I think Olmsted was creating sanctuaries in cities mainly, whether it was Central Park, you know, Boston, Brooklyn. And he was trying to create a respite from the environment of the grid, in particular, the grid in New York City. And so I think, you know, your first is what is the mission or the program of the park? What is it there to deliver with respect to an experience? You know, we do live in a very beautiful part of the world with a lot of nature and access to nature. So is the park there to drive community actions and thus fields and playgrounds and architecture or a mission to bring people together and create, you know, venues? Or is it there to let people get a respite from the larger environment around them? And I think, you know, Olmsted's mission, you know, what he did, I think, very well is he mixed both rural, I'll call rural or rustic settings, which in Central Park specifically is the north end of the park versus the south end of the park, which is highly programmatic, highly designed, and there to represent art and culture.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thanks. It's very good to hear your background and fascinating. And I haven't heard Olmsted described quite so perfectly. That was great. Yeah. So thank you so much for applying.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. Pardon? Yes, yeah, yeah. So just a reminder to group... Just a reminder to you that PTC gets 15 minutes. And then we'll be back on the last commission. So this is Kelsey Baines. Hi, Kelsey.
Hello.
And just to give you an idea, you have a few minutes, if you wish, to introduce yourself, talk about why you want to be on PTC and so forth. And then we will be timing you, we'll be asking you questions, and then you'll have some time to wrap up, we hope. So, welcome, and it's nice to see you.
Thank you. So...
So I will start by introducing myself, although I think I'm familiar to most of you here. My name is Kelsey Baines. I thank you for this opportunity and for your time tonight. I know several of the other applicants for these positions and just want to say that you have a lot of very qualified applicants. So I'm going to try to highlight some ways in which I think I would bring a unique perspective to this Commission. I grew up in the East Bay and moved away for my lengthy undergraduate and graduate training in clinical psychology and was able to come to Palo Alto because I got a postdoctoral fellowship here in substance use and homelessness. And was fortunate to be able to stay here in Palo Alto after being hired on as a psychologist within VA supportive housing. I rent in this neighborhood just down the street from here and really love my apartment. I overlook Heritage Park and it has beautiful trees, it's very walkable. So part of why I'm interested in applying for this Commission is because I really love where I live and I would like to contribute to this community. I also think that as a psychologist, I have some skills that would be a boon to this Commission. So I have quite a lot of training in listening to people and expressing empathy, particularly when people are kind of emotionally charged. I'm also trained as a clinical psychologist, or excuse me, as a clinical scientist. So I really try to view things from the lens of making evidence-based decisions and looking at the, the research and kind of how I think about difficult decisions. And while most of my research and clinical work has been focused in addiction, which isn't obviously relevant to planning, I kind of view things within the lens of behavioral economics, which was what my dissertation was focused on. And I think that behavioral economics has a lot of interesting insights for planning and for transportation decisions. I do need to give a disclaimer on behalf of my employer that, so I don't have any personal conflicts, but just the VA would like me to say that I can't, if I was appointed to this Commission, I wouldn't be able to discuss any VA policies or procedures. And I wouldn't be able to disclose any non-public data and would, of course, need to recuse myself from VA-related agenda items.
Thank you very much. Questions? Tom?
I think the good news is the VA is federal and they can do what they want. They don't really come to us. So a couple, a couple of quick questions. And I think you presented yourself very well and it's really interesting idea of applying your background to planning transportation. How do you view, so, so under the last question here, you said you've read the comp plan and the South Forest Plan, but haven't, and looked at some ordinances, we haven't really gone through all the planning ordinances. I guess, how would you view your role on the Planning Commission in terms of applying our ordinances to projects versus kind of your personal feelings?
Sure. Yeah, and so I think that part of the role would be doing my research in terms of what the ordinances state. So certainly I have to work within the framework. I think as I was writing my application, I was also thinking about some of the changes that are happening in regard to actually implementing the comp plan. So like the item last night. So just as a Commissioner, I would imagine that some of my feedback would be maybe outside the, the letter of what's in the comp plan because you, as council members, would be looking for ways to actually implement it. So looking to make some changes, but I would obviously have to be doing my research to not be suggesting things that are totally off the wall.
And second, really quick one, if my colleagues will let me. Your, your work with homelessness, do you have ideas on approaches for RV dwellers?
Yeah, so I think I would look to some of the examples in East Palo Alto, like what Pastor Baines has been doing with finding places to house, or house may be the wrong word, but finding like a lot where there would be hookups and people could be safe. So there wouldn't be the impact on neighborhoods with the campers, but people would be able to remain a part of this community. So I would just be interested in solutions like that.
Thank you.
Adrian?
So thank you for applying.
Do you know all of us? I know our name placards are here, but I think, I think you do.
That's me. Adrian and Karen and I were both formerly on the Planning Commission, so it's nice to see an applicant. So I guess, I guess one question, something that I kind of struggled with in the Planning Commission, is how much of it is, you know, responding to council direction? And the council says, like, hey, we have this policy, we need an implementation, can you please comment on it? And how much of it is, you know, I wouldn't go to Tom's sort of like personal advocacy, but where you're trying to say like, hey, you know, in my research, in my experience, there's something different happening here. And so, so how do you kind of balance those two things?
Yeah, because I, I would imagine that as a Commissioner, I am directly serving the council, so I would be addressing whatever the council's questions are. But I also think that part of the role is to maybe think of things that the council wouldn't otherwise think of. So vetting various proposals. So I would be bringing kind of my unique experience. And that's where I think kind of having a wide diversity of opinion on the council or on the Commission would be really useful in the feedback that we give. So basically thinking about different things than the council might be.
Sure. And then just one kind of separate question from that. A lot of our discussions, at least, I mean, I think there's going to be two very interesting projects in the next couple of years for the Planning Commission to touch on. One is Coverley and kind of the master planning going on there, and the other is the Frye Site. So these two large parcels of land where we can imagine what we want to imagine. Any thoughts on those two?
Yeah, so I've gone to a couple of the community meetings, one for each of the two sites that were mentioned. I have fewer opinions on the Coverley site. Unfortunately, when I went to the community meeting, I was at a table that really was passionate about dancing, so I don't know that I got the full scope of what people in the community would like. And, yeah. So I, I get that dancing is very important to the community, they really want a nice gym. But, yeah, I think that Coverley is a really exciting opportunity to really build something that will serve this community for a long time to come. I was really interested in some of the questions around what uses could be shared between the school and the community more broadly. And thinking about how do we create enough open space so that this is going to be a flexible space in the future? And then in regard to the Frye Site, I, after the meeting, I went and walked around there just to get a better sense of what it looks like and kind of try to envision what it could be. And I do think that some of the comments that I heard around trying to get an actual creek in there and a park, and to try to think about how we could get housing that won't displace people, because I'm also thinking about the Ventura neighborhood historically has been a lower income neighborhood, so we want to think about how to not cause displacement there when we're doing development.
Corey has a question, and I have one intermediate here. As a renter, how do you think that would inform your decisions on the Planning Commission? And how do you, you know, we have 40, 45% renters. How do you think that colors your, your own background as you come into this?
Yeah, so I've had a pretty interesting experience as a renter here, and it, this is not the easiest place to be a renter, although I really do like renting here, I love my apartment. But it's tough because it's kind of an emotional experience, I would say, because you're in sort of a position of powerlessness or lacking power because there are such limited housing options. I'll give a, a personal example. I had my shower clog maybe about a month ago, and my roommate and I just paid to have it fixed because we didn't want to bother our landlord, we kind of didn't want to give him a reason to increase our rent. So I do think that having the perspective of a renter on this Commission is really important and maybe having more than one, because it is an important perspective for the council members to hear from.
So I'm going to guess you support affordable housing?
Yes.
However it might be defined.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, Corey?
So we've been talking a lot about the policy side and a couple of the, the big, big projects that we're envisioning, which are really exciting. But as you know, a lot of what the Planning and Transportation Commission deals with is the, the small individual projects, project review, you know, doing just nuts and bolts. How does this project conform with our rules? Do we want to approve it or not? How do we make decisions about whether to approve it or not? Can you just give us a sense of how, what kind of thought processes you would bring to conversations like that or to those kinds of hearings? How you would work with colleagues, staff, doing your own research, applicant, people who are very critical of an application for a variety of reasons? How, how would you try and manage, you know, those kinds of issues?
Yeah, so I think that part of it might touch on Councilmember DuBois's question in terms of part, I think, part of me learning to function within this role is just going to be starting with, in more detail, reading the applicable sections of whatever code. So kind of catching myself up in that regard. But I also, I think the main thing for me would just be listening to people, and that's where I think that my skill set would really come into play, just given that you're likely to get these really disparate opinions where people are really emotionally charged and really trying to listen to what people are saying, but also trying to get to the heart of what they're attempting to express. Because sometimes when people are really emotional, they will not necessarily word things in the best way. So really trying to analyze what, what's at the heart of the matter here and where, what are the natures of the disagreements so that I can try to, if not resolve them, just outline the different opinions for the council members and come to what I think would be the best solution, given that there are going to be people who are upset on either side or on, maybe on multiple sides in the case of like grade separations. I think there, there are a lot of things that people could be upset about.
Not seeing any other hands. What do you think are the biggest problems we face that you would anticipate would, would also go to PTC?
So I think there are a lot of potential issues. I, I would assume that maybe the biggest one next year might be the grade separation issue, just given that I, as I understand it, there's kind of a time limitation in regard to making a decision, and there's a lot of moving parts in terms of how do we not disrupt traffic so much, but we really need to make decisions. So I would anticipate that there would be a lot of items potentially on grade separation things. And then just kind of furthering the housing work plan and trying to push us towards our goal of getting more people housed in Palo Alto. And I'm trying to think of other problems that would come before the Commission. It seems like parking is a big issue based on last night. So maybe doing, I, I think there's already been a lot of great work done by a lot of people in this room around like residential permit parking and just thinking about how to price parking. But, but I would hope that potentially that would be something that would come before the Commission as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, before I have time, like you said, we used a lot of good candidates. And so I'm just encouraging you to apply candidates for some reason. Doesn't happen.
Sure.
But also look at our Human Resources Commission, which I don't know if you're familiar with that Commission?
Yes, kind of vaguely. But, yeah, I could see that being a good fit for me as well. Yeah, thank you.
So if you want to give a, did you have a question for us, sorry? If you want to give just a last pitch to us for the ready旦, you've got just a few seconds left.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I guess I'll just thank the Commission and I hope you will consider me. And I think I could do a lot of great service for this community and I really like living here and would like to contribute. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Well, I'm here to tell you, I have the plan to stop the rain. No, I don't. Hi. I hope I read them properly.
You've got some time to introduce yourself. You've got 15 minutes total. We'll try to give you 30 seconds at the end to wrap it up.
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you for letting me take some of your time today. You had a busy day yesterday, I understand. You were here pretty late. So I'm Deana Mosser, and I'm sure you're wondering why a former city council mayor would be interested in a seat on the Planning Commission. And for me, the answer is pretty simple. I care a great deal about this community. I care about our future. I care about preserving our history and projecting our community values. I have been active in the community for over 30 years. I was a founding member of our Neighborhood Association. I managed a transportation demand management program for a major employer in the area. And I've also worked on a number of different environmental issues over the years. I do understand the importance of the Planning Commission and its role as an advisory body to the City Council. The Planning Commission is tasked with reviewing staff reports, fully listening to the public, making sure that proposals comply with laws, ordinances, the comprehensive plan, all of those things that, that we have to comply with. And the Planning Commission is often the first stop for the public to hear the details about a proposal and to have input. And it is so very important that the public have adequate opportunity for input and review of proposals. So I, I feel that my experience provides me with both the practical knowledge and historical perspective on issues that are still very relevant today. And I think that I am well-qualified to serve as an effective Planning Commissioner, and I hope that ultimately I'll have your support. Hands everywhere. Tom, and then Adrian, and Eric, you? Did you have your hand up?
Thanks, thanks for applying, Deana.
Thank you, Tom. Did you have a talk?
I wondered if you could tell us more detail about the multiple transit things you were involved in. I hear you list 1996, so the Research Park, the Tri-Transit Campaign, like what was that?
Yeah, I worked for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation and I managed their transportation demand management program for them. And so as a TDM manager, I was part of a group of TDM managers for the large employers in the area. And at the time, there was a TDM program that was managed through sort of headquartered in the Research Park, and PAMP was part of that group. So I was just part of that group.
And what was the Event Shuttle?
The Event Shuttle, huh. That was the first, the first shuttle ever, ever to be had in Palo Alto. There was a lot of concern about people getting downtown for special events. And so we, working with the Chamber of Commerce, we came up with the idea of a special event shuttle that brought people from South Palo Alto to North Palo Alto for the Art Festival that summer. And from there really is sort of, that was the beginning of the slow steps that we've taken as a community to build a shuttle system. And so what we have today really started with that. Yeah. Adrian?
So, so Tom actually took my question. I was also interested in some of the transportation efforts and campaigns, and thanks for that answer. You mentioned one thing that kind of piques my interest about working with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
And I actually think there have been a few decisions we've made here in Palo Alto the past few years where we've really actually needed some input from the Chamber and the business community, whether it's on issues such as parking or commercial growth. And that connection hasn't quite been there. And I'm wondering if you think, you know, the, the Commission and your potential role in it could help foster that, and what would that look like?
Well, I mean, it's certainly possible. My experience with the Chamber of Commerce is that it's changed its complexion and personality and interest in doing one thing and another over the years. and interest in doing one thing and another over the years. A lot of it depends upon who their executive director is. And then it also depends on who their active members are. So um, back in the day when I was working at PAMF and, you know, actively involved actually in parking issues as well with the Chamber, um, there was just a lot of interest. And that interest really came from their then executive director. So um, I, I, I think, I think the planning commission can ask for input, but I don't think the planning commission can really successfully convince the Chamber that they should be involved. The Chamber's gonna choose what they're gonna choose to be involved in. I mean, I, like you, many times over the years have wished the Chamber were more active in certain issues and they've chosen not to be sometimes, I think, to the community's detriment.
Karen?
I imagine several of us here have known you for quite a long time.
I know, I was thinking about garlic parties on our street. How many years ago was that?
We used to live near each other. So thank you for your application.
Sure.
So one of the things on um, uh, in your application says like, you know, you're interested in how communities grapple with change while preserving their core values and processes used to make decisions. Do you watch the current planning commission at work?
I have done, but I don't watch them on a regular basis, no.
Okay. So I guess, giving you the opportunity to, to extrapolate more on, on this statement. And do you think, one of the things is I watch a fair amount of the planning commission meetings and it seems to me, personal opinion, that the focus could be more present on uh what the charges of the commission. So two questions is, how would you um, um, address this aspect of grappling with the change while preserving the core values and processes used to make decisions? And also how to keep the, uh, could you contribute to the commission staying focused on its charge?
Yeah, I think commo, uh, focus is really very important. And that has a lot to do with how people work together on the commission, how the chair manages the body and what rules the commission agrees um to abide by. So that, that's a lot of what happens with focus. But the, the, for me, the thing that's so important to help the community grapple with change, if you will, and come up with good policy is what I referred to in, in my opening statement, which is that it's very important that the public have input. The planning commission is, is like the first place the public really gets to go. I mean, in some cases, they get to go to ARB or, or other places, but typically it's the planning commission. And so if the planning commission does a really good job of talking about the issues, of listening to the issues, of understanding the concerns, sort of weighing those things against the policies and proposals that are before them. And then trying to, you know, come up with, as we all know, we're often being asked to cut a baby in half, that horrible expression. But we're, none of us, the council is never asked to make an easy decision. They're all very complicated things. Everybody's argument is a good argument, but they can't all be true. And so the planning commission is the first chance for a body to try to look at all of those varying points of view and come up with a recommendation. Hopefully that will be of value to the council and that will come forward with the community understanding what the proposal was, what the pros and cons are, if the recommendation doesn't agree with their particular point of view, why it doesn't agree, what the commission is thinking about that. Because I think that helps the council. When you have to make the, the final decision, which you do have to make. Uh, I don't see the planning commission as a good place to be crafting policy. It's a place where you review the information that's before you, the proposal, the staff report, so on and so forth. So, does that help?
It does, thank you.
Thanks, nice to see you again.
It's nice to see you too.
And doing this. I, 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 add, add me to the list of those who was really curious about your experience with uh PAMF and, and transportation management. How was that? What did you learn and what worked? And how did you tell?
Well, I learned what we all know intuitively, which is it's very difficult to get people out of their cars. I mean, that's really difficult. And certainly at PAMF, the doctors were not going to take public transit to work, okay? So, you know, if you will, there's sort of a, there is a, there is a class structure that happens. And um, and that's, that's true in general, I think. There are people who um, you know, feel like they need their cars for one reason or another. And uh, sometimes they do need their car. Mothers of children, fathers of children uh have good reason to need cars. And there are things that ameliorate uh their dependence on the car. The more generous offerings you have for someone like, uh, for example, something that did work and I'm sure is still being used regularly today. Okay, mother A, you agree to take the bus five days a week. That's great. And if you get a call from school and your kid is sick and you have to get to school, we will pay for you to take Uber or whatever it is you're gonna take to get to the school. And, you know, no sweat, don't worry, do it, we handle that for you. Those, those sorts of things work um i- in a situation like that. Um, and the other thing that helps is, is information. Helping people understand how they can take transit or how they can carpool or vanpool. Because many people just sort of don't understand how it works and it's a little intimidating and, you know, they just, they just need guidance, they need sort of help to get there. And then lastly, just the financial support for, we, we're gonna help you buy your transit pass or, so that it isn't so expensive for you. Again, the people who can really afford to do it are typically the people who don't do it. Um, and so you have to build in some economic incentives to get um people who are earning less money to take advantage of things that will sometimes work for them.
Deana, you had a lot of background with city council, PTC and so forth. What do you think was the hardest problem you grappled with? Where you worked closely with PTC to come up with a really good answer?
Hmm, yeah, I haven't thought about that actually. I was gonna say the hardest problem I ever grappled with was two months after I was in office and the creek flooded. That was, that was the, the very hardest thing.
What housing projects were there while you were?
Well.
Deana and I crossed over briefly, but only briefly.
Eight Hundred High is probably a good example. Eight Hundred High was an enormously controversial project. It was sort of the first big housing project downtown, even though it's not downtown downtown. It's the, it's the project on, everyone knows where it is, okay? So um, at the time, people were, I mean, really for it or really against it. There was no, no middle ground. And it ended up um being placed on the ballot and there was a big votes, there was a big political ballot over it. And I don't know, that's, that was really interesting. And for, for years after, people would come up to me and they would complain about the color or they would complain about the something. But of course, by now, it's just part of the community and I live near there. So it's like, it's just a building, there's no, you know, the impacts were really quite mild, but it was very upsetting. I think mostly because it was the first of its kind in the area and it, it sort of started people worrying that we were gonna have lots of its kind in the area, which hasn't happened.
Yeah, so, yes, uh, thanks, Adrian.
So just a quick comment on that. I remember getting really interested in planning stuff, cause when I was whatever, twelve or something, I went to Hassett Hardware and I remember they were giving out flyers against Eight Hundred High and I was just trying to figure out why is this happening? But one other issue, so something we're dealing with now a little bit on the planning side of things is when and how do we streamline projects, particularly around the housing issue? And I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about that, where the planning commission may need or different bodies need to step back a little bit?
Yeah, I, the planning commission absolutely shouldn't be in the way of anything. The planning commission really is there to help you make good policy ultimately. And so if the planning commission um is useful, I think particularly in its public, taking of public input and reviewing, sort of providing that first step of people to get familiar with what's going on and comment. If that's valuable for a particular project, then it's valuable to the council. As to streamlining some things, um, I was pleased to see the notion in the, in the housing revisions that you're taking a look at, that there, that there's talk of streamlining affordable housing. I have worked with affordable housing. I was on the board of the Community Working Group. And uh, we worked with Eden Housing to build nine hundred, eight hundred Alma. Nine oh one Alma. I was gonna say eight hundred is the wrong address. And um, so I, I really worked a lot on that and. Eight oh one, okay, good. I'm glad someone knows the name of the project. And again, there was, there was controversy with that, but it was really interesting to work through that and to really learn about the financing of affordable housing projects. It's a really different world from building uh market rate housing. And so you have to do things in order to make it possible for the good people at the Housing Corp. And, and others who want to build affordable housing to do it. Because it isn't just on the surface affordable in the way that other housing is. So streamlining is one of those things that would help.
Time flew by and.
It always does.
The fifteen minutes is up. So, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, thank you for your time, appreciate it. I hope I'll have your support. Thanks.
Thanks. Is that the double, that's the double whammy? Wasn't that you or not?
That was me.
Yes, yes. Okay, um, our next applicant is David Barron. And I think he also spoke to us last night. Welcome, David. Pleasure to have you. As you know, this is a fifteen minute interview. You have a chance to talk about your interests, yourself, your interest in PTC at the beginning. And then um, at the end, if we have time, you will as, as well. So this is your opportunity to sort of market yourself.
Okay, well, thanks very much. I um, I fully admit I'm a relative newcomer to the discussions of policy here in Palo Alto. But I've been interested in planning and transit for a while. For a number of reasons. I think the main ones uh being that their relationship to each other and to our impact on the environment. And also because of the cost of housing in the Bay Area and in other expensive metro areas in the US and what, what the, uh, what our policies do to contribute to that. Professionally, I'm a software engineer, which is on its surface, not all that related to planning and transportation. I think however, one of the things that I do is I'm quite involved in technical standardization on the web, which has a bit of a, which I think gives me some experiences that are useful for um, some of the work that the, that the commission does. In particular, um, sort of review and analysis of technical documents and understanding sort of how they relate to each other and so on. And then also just the um, trying to, to find and build consensus among groups of people who have different, different opinions and different proposals for how, what to do. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So um, it looks to me as though you're a renter, am I right?
Yes.
And um, I didn't see how long you have lived in Palo Alto, maybe I overlooked it?
A total of about nine and a half years, although I was living in San Francisco for six years. So I'm, I only, I moved back um relatively recently.
So, and would you mind by jumping in and telling us what your experience as a renter? How, how would that color serving on PTC and how does, how is that different from being an owner? And renters make up about forty-five percent of our population in Palo Alto.
I think to, to some degree, it's, it's hard to, it's, it's hard to claim to be a representative renter or anything like that. I don't, though I, I don't know that anyone can claim to be a representative homeowner either. But I think renters, I think, are always, there, there's some, there's some amount of, some less stability in terms of, in the future, in what are, the way the renter looks at their housing situation. Just as a result of not, uh, as a result of uncertainty about what costs are gonna be in the future. In that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what my rent is going to be six months from now. I hope it's not too much more than it is now. But I, I think renters, I, I think while in some ways homeowners sort of have a more, a more permanent, the, 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 a more permanent connection to the community. In many ways renters can be long-term residents of the community as well. And I think, given the costs of housing right now, one of the things that is probably going to happen more is that people who, you might have expected to become homeowners in a previous generation will be living much of their lives as renters in this area. And the housing stock and so on needs to accommodate, you know, more people renting throughout their lives and so on.
No, I, I think that's a, an apt comment, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Yeah, thank you for replying. I wonder, one of these just came to the PTC last couple of years was single story overlay, so you should know your better.
Very, not in, not in any detail, but.
This is mostly in our Eichler neighborhoods?
Yeah.
They, they have, there's an ordinance where a group of neighbors get enough signatures, they can apply for a single story overlay, which means that neighborhood will be a single story and you can't build a second story. And, and so my question to you is, if you were on the commission, what kind of concerns, questions would you have if, if a neighborhood came and applied and you were basically reviewing that application?
So, so I think there's a few things. I think one is how that neighborhood fits into the, the city's plans for future development. In other words, if, for example, the, the city had want, wanted to, some areas, for example, areas near transit to become more dense in the future, is that area particularly close to transit or not? I, I don't think that's true of many of the Eichler neighborhoods, off the top of my head. That, that's one aspect of it. I think there's another aspect, which is that at some point, it, there are trade-offs between current, current occupants and potential future occupants who may want something different. And there's also trade-offs between um, people who would benefit from higher density versus people who would benefit from things staying as they are. I don't, I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think change is easy. But on the other hand, I think that there are cases, there are cases where um, you know, as an area grows, change does happen. And I, I don't, I'm sort of wandering into generalities here because I don't, I, I guess be, beyond, um, beyond those thoughts and just sort of one, being concerned about what precedents exist and what precedents would be set in the future, um, I don't know that I have. I don't know that I have any other thoughts specific to that question.
So when the PTC is dealing with specific projects, right? You know, somebody has a specific project for their property that they want to do new development on or redevelopment on. Obviously, it can be just as controversial as the big tough, you know, policy questions, whether it's a single-story overlay or the housing work plan. How, you talked about your work, you know, in trying to, your professional work in trying to manage different disparate viewpoints. How would you go about hearing applications, working with staff, hearing the applicants, people who are extremely critical and opposing an application, working with your colleagues, doing your own research to try and apply our code and approve or disapprove projects? I mean, tell us a little bit about how you would approach that work.
I mean, I think at a high level, the process needs to be something that both is fair and is perceived as being fair. Which means that both, that people, people on both sides of the issue need to be heard. But also that decisions have some measure of consistency between, from decision to decision, so that people have reasonable expectation, both for fairness and so that people have reasonable expectations of what is going to happen and what would happen in the future were they to, were they to propose that sort of thing. I think, I mean, at a more specific level, I think how to deal with controversy depends a lot on the particular controversy and on what the issues at stake are. So I'm not sure I have any more specifically there.
So thank you for applying. You said that you lived in San Francisco before?
Yes.
So what did you like living in, what did you like about living in San Francisco? And what do you like about living over here in Palo Alto?
I think one of the, there are advantages and disadvantages to both places, obviously. Palo Alto is quieter and it's, in many ways, a safer place. At the same time, San Francisco, being able to rely on transit to get around is very nice. Not, in many cases, not having to worry about using a car. Even though I had a car the entire time, I would sometimes not use it for multiple weeks on end. And I found it nice to not be able, not need to. There was often more things to do. I think, you know, as I'm, you know, as I'm potential, you know, may in the future have a family, schools here are obviously better. I don't know. I could, I could name other things, but I don't know if it's worth continuing.
So thank you for applying. You mentioned one thing in your application about kind of automobile users paying more for like their full share of using things. And one thing you mentioned is paid parking. And can you kind of just walk us through like, you know, why should people pay for their parking? And look, I'll be honest, I'm generally supportive of that, actually. But I just would like to hear your thinking on like, you know, why should we pay to park on a downtown street?
So if you look at the land use in an area like this, a significant percentage of the land is used for parking. And when the land is as expensive as it is, what our current policies today do is they essentially, they require, they require developers, they require developers to build parking along with developments. They, the city provides parking in lots of places. And the result of that is that parking is generally free or very cheap. And so people don't consider the costs of the land used for parking in their decisions about whether to own a car, in their decisions about whether to drive places, and so on. Whereas the land that is used for parking is in fact very expensive land that could potentially be used for other things. It could be used for housing. It could be used for green space. And while, while moving from, moving from here to there would obviously be very disruptive. And I think it's important to think about what fair ways to manage transitions are and, you know, based on what the expectations people have already are. I think a world where people consider the costs of parking, the costs of storage of cars and so on, would lead people to make different decisions about land use at a personal level. And that could be beneficial for the environment. It could be beneficial for many other things.
I won't start another question because our buzzer has just gone off. But thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your interest in the Planning and Transportation Commission. And we will see you again.
Okay, thank you very much.
You want to be on the PTC. And then we have an opportunity to ask you questions. And the whole process is about fifteen minutes.
Which is more than last time. I think it was ten.
Well, tonight you get fifteen. Yeah, yeah, everything else is ten. Okay. So jump right in. Probably two or three minutes will, you know, will be enough for your introduction and then we'll ask you questions.
Okay, so I'm Rebecca Eisenberg. You probably know me by now because it's probably what, my eighth or so time up here talking to you all. Never give up. They say that, you know, success is going from failure to failure without any lack of enthusiasm. I continue to believe that I would be a true asset to the Planning and Transportation Commission. I am an attorney with now it's more than twenty-five years of experience. Pretty much all of them, right, based right here in Silicon Valley. I attended Stanford and graduated in nineteen ninety with lots of honors and attended law school at Harvard, but came quickly back here. I even skipped out my own graduation to make it back here because I missed the Bay Area so much. I believe I would be a fit for the Planning and Transportation Commission because I care deeply and am very knowledgeable, I believe, about the systems that serve the community here in Palo Alto. I feel very strongly about non-automobile transportation and about exploring means of increasing housing without necessarily building. I think one thing that stands out about me, I believe, both among the other applicants and among the current Planning Commission, is that I have no financial gain should I be appointed. It might be viewed as an asset to actually work in the industry, but it's my perception that even the appearance of a conflict of interest can actually cause some, can make the public question and affect trust in the Commission. I think we're at a time right now where our community could really benefit from coming together. I'm not, you know, pro-growth person. I'm not a anti-growth person. I believe strongly that the role of government is to foster community. I love this community. I'm part of this community. I think that Palo Alto is an incredible place to live for babies up through seniors. If you look at the demographics of our neighborhood, you'll see babies up through seniors with expanding seniors. And I think that the Commission could more reflect our population and could do a great job of serving, you know, the population. And that's why I'm here. I hope you'll vote for me.
Okay, so Tom, I saw first, and anyone else who wants to go, just put your hand up.
Yeah, so I appreciate your promises to answer to question three.
Thanks.
Come to meetings and be prepared.
Get there on time. Be prepared.
I'm gonna ask a question I've asked some other people. So I don't know if you followed the SSO conversations a year or two ago. Do you know about single-story overlay?
Not prepared to speak about it. As I said, I like to be prepared.
Well, it's a general question. So we have an ordinance that says in Eichler neighborhoods, if a certain percentage of the neighbors want to, they can impose a single-story overlay on themselves, which means that that neighborhood will be one story. And again, it's primarily Eichlers because of the back of the house is glass and somebody in this two-story building can look into your living room. So if you're in PTC and the neighborhood came in and petitioned to have an SSO, how would you evaluate it? What would you be concerned about?
Well, thank you for that question. I think that's a great question. I guess I would look at the reports filed by the petitioner and I would read the report and recommendations filed by the Planning Commission, you know, itself or by the, you know, department itself. I would look at the studies that they use to back that up. And I would write down questions I want to ask during the meeting and I would ask them in order to find the answer. It's, I can't say that, you know, I would approve it or disapprove it without understanding the context in order to give you the best advice. You know, I can tell you, my general feeling is that I think it's nice that for communities in general, this is just in general, to be able to choose the appearance of their community. But that's without any context of possible compelling reasons against that. I mean, what did the buyers know when they bought their home? You know, it seems disingenuous to buy a home in a community that has a single-story rule and then to insist that you have a right to build another story when you bought it with the knowledge that it needs, that you're in a single-story neighborhood. And it seems maybe unfair to the other neighbors too, you know. But then again, I would really want to look at the context of it all. Yeah.
Who was next? Sorry. Good. Eric.
One of the things that PTC looks at invariably is, you know, parking is something that comes up a lot.
Yeah.
People bring a project and say, well, there's not enough parking and so forth. And there's one view of that that says, you know, we ought to be limiting parking, okay? Because if you have too much parking, you're sort of encouraging people to drive cars. And if you limit parking, that's one of the ways to encourage people to find other ways of getting around than driving cars. The other perspective is if you don't put enough parking in, right, those people are still going to drive their cars and they're going to go park in the neighborhoods and, you know, and the people in the neighborhoods aren't going to like that.
Right.
How do you weigh those two and how do you resolve that when you're, how do you approach that?
So it's interesting. One of the notes I took on my iPhone when I was taking a run earlier is actually about parking. And the note was, need current studies about parking. My degree is in statistics and I am great with math. I love math. And I think that, you know, there are studies, you know, that really show the relationship between parking and traffic. What I can say, though, is that a large part of our community doesn't drive. A lot of seniors don't drive. Youth, they don't drive. And what's, I think, you know, it's hard to tell people not to drive or to take away parking if you don't have infrastructure to enable non-driving options. I would be thrilled if there were something like an electric shuttle that could go from neighborhoods where seniors live to the areas where seniors grocery shop. And, you know, I could guess that probably more than seniors would take it. You know, additionally, there are lots of streets that lack safe bike lanes. Embarcadero remains a big problem. Well, first of all, query why we have this highway through our nicest neighborhoods here in Palo Alto. We have this Embarcadero road where people go sixty miles an hour regularly going through our neighborhood that passes four schools, at least. I'm not counting the preschools, you know. This is, it would be great if we could have bike lanes that are safe, places for people to bike. When people are biking on the sidewalks, that endangers seniors who are walking, other people who are walking, you know, you know, parents pushing strollers. You know, I think the best way to ease this parking situation is to make it easy, really easy, for people to get places without driving. And we've got a far way to go with that.
Adrian?
So thank you for applying again. Quick question, just following up on the biking thing. So Palo Alto does have one of the highest like bike mode shares in the country, so like six to eight percent of most trips, which is awesome.
Yeah.
But we have a goal of increasing that and also reducing single occupancy drivers. That said, in the past year, you've probably seen, we've had a couple fiascos around bike lanes in Palo Alto. Ross Road, Bryant, a few other areas. So what do we do there, right? I mean, like, we've got a plan. We're saying we're going to do bike lanes. We do outreach. It may not be good enough. How could the Planning Commission kind of help get us there?
Well, of course, the role of the Planning Commission is just to give advice to you all and you get to do things. So, I mean, but that said, it's a great question and it's not an easy question. I've been following that Ross, the Ross Road fiasco, the responses to it, pretty much. And that is very, pretty close to a route I often take between our house and my daughter's high school. So I see that. You know, just without knowing any of this for a fact, because I'm sure there's a lot of research out there, I'm guessing, and lots of opinions. When there's a lack of community buy-in, then it can make it harder. And at least my experience reading the responses of people who live on or near Ross Road, they seemed a little bit surprised. Again, I don't know how often they were actually notified about these upcoming changes and given an opportunity to participate. Maybe it was a lot and maybe they ignored it. You know, I don't know that. But I do think to the extent that the community can be involved, then it's easier to make these changes. Also, I think that there are places where there really are low-hanging fruit. I mean, I don't think Ross Road was ever viewed as a problem street, which is maybe why there was that kind of surprise. When Embarcadero is so much more of a problem street, that maybe the council could start with the bigger problems first and then make it over to things like Ross because, you know, then make it over to things like Ross, because, you know, Bryant, Cowper are existing alternative routes to Ross. Just kind of guessing.
We'll just say we are looking at doing a bike lane along Embarcadero.
And I'm sure there's a lot of, you know, disagreement about that, too.
Yeah, yeah. I was just saying, we are looking at doing a bike lane along Embarcadero.
That's great.
We've improved it between Bryant and El Camino, something like that. Anyways, but thank you.
Great.
So, Rebecca, on page three of five of your application, under number two at the top, you gave a description of the meeting you went to on October 10.
Oh, yeah.
Which was very descriptive. And I want to know, in this case, which is, what you're indicating is there was some trouble with the successful functionality, I think. And you said, you'd like to help move the commission into a more positive, conciliatory, compromising, and productive direction. So, talk a little about that. You did go on to talk about it and that you're an attorney and so forth. What other things might you bring to that that would change your perception?
Honestly, I think even more important than the fact that I'm an attorney might be the fact that I'm a mom. You know, it's, to this, there, often, my son really wants to watch a superhero movie, and my daughter really wants to watch Doctor Who, or whatever. And, you know, so, they are different. So, but meanwhile, they actually have things in common. They have supernatural elements in common. You know, they have sometimes strong women, especially this series of Doctor Who, which I want to recommend, is pretty amazing in common. And, you know, through talking to my son and my daughter and thinking about where the overlap is, 10 out of 10 times, we're able to find a movie that meets the interests of both my daughter's, you know, nerdy needs and my son's action-packed needs. And that was one of the things that kind of frustrated me, watching this meeting, is that the truth is, like, for example, that issue with the balcony, you know, a beer deck that House wanted to have. The truth is, is that, you know, there probably would have been a way to approve this, you know, party deck while also not harming the namers. There's a lot of talk, for example, about sound ordinance. You know, well, a deck is going to violate the sound ordinance. Well, let's make sure there's enforcement on the sound ordinance. You know, let's give neighbors a chance to complain. Let's have follow-up, and then maybe let's have material fines, which could raise revenue if that happens. Additionally, changing the exterior of a building, maybe that would cause a reassessment that would cause an increase in taxes. I looked at what the owner of the House building across the street is paying, and it's something like $30,000 in property tax a year, which is a fraction of what my next-door neighbors pay for their single-family home. And, you know, many residents here in Palo Alto, well, these are owners of a commercial property building that, you know, makes a ton of revenue from renting this out. Maybe building a deck could actually trigger a reassessment that would enable an increase in property taxes that would be legal under California law. But there was really no conversation about where either side had mutual ground. And it was more just binary. Yes, deck is good, deck is bad. And I think that we can do better than that. I think rather than yes or no, we can discuss how. And how do we serve our community? How do we make sure that we don't violate sound ordinances while also serving our population and letting them have fun, you know, within reason? That's what I'd like to see.
Good. Thanks so much for coming. That was the bell going off.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
I love coming here. You know, I hope I don't have to again. But it's always such an honor to get to speak with you all, and I really appreciate it.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
So, I think we have Byrne next. I was, I think we're missing a page of his application. I only have.
We are missing a couple pages. I was missing one before, too, so.
Fifty years.
Really? Dr. Who, 15 years? Wow.
Yeah, it's the same as mine was before, too. I'd say just punt. I don't know where we could get another page of this.
Hi, Byrne.
A tie, yes. I had to find it in the ghost department.
Do you have boots on?
No, not tonight.
No boots? I don't know.
Nor have.
So, welcome.
I think you've been here before.
In some form or another.
Actually, no, I'll bet in this room.
No.
Yeah, that's, this is relatively new, you know, speaking.
Mm-hmm.
So, welcome. You know the drill. You get to talk for a few minutes if you'd like, then we get to quiz you, and you get 15 minutes all told.
Okay, very good. Well, I appreciate the chance to be here. I really appreciate the opportunity of applying for the Planning and Transportation Commission. Five things I'd like to share about myself that you may or may not be aware of relative to the Planning Commission is, one, I'm committed to this. If you were to select me, I'm committed to fulfilling the responsibilities and obligations of the board. I take that seriously. Two, I'm available. I no longer work, so I don't have those conflicts. My wife and I have actually already penciled out every other Wednesday through next year for any plans. So, I do intend to be here fully as much as possible if you were to select me. Three is, I'm knowledgeable. One is knowledgeable about the process of the Planning Commission, what happens there, how you work with your colleagues, how you work with the staff, how you work with the public in particular, listening to them and being respectful of them as you go through the processes. Four, I'm knowledgeable about the history of the city in many aspects, what's come before, what's worked, what hasn't worked, where we've got problems that seem intractable and we haven't solved them yet. I have, you know, some, a depth of knowledge there. And five, I would like to believe I'm capable in this role, performing the duties and the discussions, working with my colleagues in a respectful fashion, working with the public respectfully, understanding what you, the council, need to understand, and fulfilling the obligations to you. So, that's my opening statement, and I look forward to your questions.
Understanding my friend.
Yeah.
Well, Byrne. Yeah, thanks for applying. You're welcome. It's pretty, we have two former mayors applying tonight, which is pretty interesting. I think I had an issue with my packet. I'm missing one of your pages, but there was a question, I think of, have you watched a recent Planning Commission meeting? And, you know, I guess, have you been following the Planning Commission? Can you comment a little bit?
In particular, I've watched the recent discussions on affordable housing, the affordable housing project that was in front of you and the commission for a year or more, that process, how it went, the discussions, the back and forth, questions by the council, responses by the commission.
What's your thought on the process for that?
You know, there's a joint obligation of a commissioner to say what they believe. You know, the commissioners do not have to believe what you, the council, believe. You know, we can have our own separate opinions. On the other hand, when you have a need for information, when you say, hey, here are our options, we want to have this fleshed out, even if I were not to believe those options are the right options, if you've asked for an assessment of them, I need to provide that assessment as well in an unbiased fashion. So, coming out of that, I would say that, you know, the council is, or rather, the commission is here to support you and the community, and we've got to do that in a manner that addresses what you need to know.
Hi, Byrne. Thanks for doing this, all right?
People have questioned me about doing it, but.
All of us as well, all right? But, so, on affordable housing, since we're talking about that. Somebody brings a project to the Planning and Transportation Commission, says, here's my project. Says, I need this much concession on parking, or I'll pick parking. Need this much concession on parking, or I can't build a project, right? Neighbors come back and say, wait a second, okay, our streets are packed with cars already, right? You know, please don't allow this thing that doesn't have enough parking. How should the Planning and Transportation Commission deal with that?
A lot of it is a matter of context. As you talk about a project versus generically, if you've got a location, if you've got a situation, you need to assess what's happening in that location. If the project is senior or housing or affordable, or if it's at market, you know, those have different aspects of what's required for it. And, you know, I would tend to be more tolerant of some things for some categories and for other categories. In the end, you know, something I've seen, unfortunately, a number of times in my career, going back a long time, is if you get out too far in front of the public, it's not going to work. If you have, even if you believe this is the right option, the right thing for the community to do in the broad sense, if you get so far in front of the public that they won't accept it, then that's the place you can't go. Your options are either to find a way to work with the community so they understand and they do accept it, or find another solution for it. But, you know, we've had, you've had a recent case where the community rejected something that the council thought was right. I believed in it myself, but it doesn't matter. If the community is not willing to support it, you can't do it. So, it's a matter of understanding where those things are, the trade-offs you can do, but there are limits in how far you can go. Does that answer what you were wondering about in that, or?
I think so. I think if I understand what you said, it's, you know, you've got to understand sort of how far you can push the community, right? In order to reach that sort of nexus of where it'll work.
Yeah, and I would expand that to say that, you know, that there's a lot that's been done to work with the community. Not that that wasn't necessarily done here or in other cases, but work with them so that you understand more exactly what their concerns are, more exactly why it doesn't work for them, more exactly some individuals who may be involved, and find out, you know, are the ways you can move it around, some other solution that doesn't impact them as much, they're accepting of it, still lots to go over here, but work with the public to get a better understanding if possible.
So, Adrian, and Karen, and someone else, got it?
And since you guys are casual in gal, I'm wanting to take off my jacket.
It is a little warm in here.
It's been a timer.
Byrne, thank you for applying. I really appreciate that. In the past year, we've had one fairly contentious conditional-use permit for the First Baptist Church about, you know, activities outside of their main religious functions. And in the next year or two, it's fairly likely we'll get one from Castilea about their expansion plans. How would you approach that when it comes to the Planning Commission?
There are limits by law, and, you know, you can't go beyond what the law says. There are times we'd like to find out how to be flexible, but if the law says A and someone's doing B, you know, that's not there. You know, parts of what happens with the church or other situations is things slowly morph over time, or practices that have always been done get to the point where they're unacceptable, and in fact, they weren't allowed. And so, you've got to step back to what the law says, I believe. That being said, you know, to say, gee, no, you're inviting, you're the church, you're doing these activities, and it's not in what we can do in that zone, and so tomorrow you've got to stop. You know, that doesn't work either. You know, there's some in-between. If you want to go about changing the law, making an exception some possibility, that's something to be looked at. But if the law says that an activity is prohibited, it's prohibited, and you've got to find the best way of getting back to what's allowed.
I appreciate that answer. I mean, I think one of the challenges we have had here is that there are some longstanding activities that have kind of just become grandfathered, even if they're not actually allowed in that zone.
And if they're longstanding, that makes it a little bit easier to have a, you know, grandfathering period out.
Right.
But in the end, to me, it's got to be out, and that's what the law says.
Thank you.
I've not been called that before.
You were in the name tonight. Slightly shorter.
She, not I. So, what you're referring to about if something is not allowed, it's just not allowed, are you referring to findings? Because with conditional-use permit, which is the First Baptist Church, there were findings that had to be made. Is that the kind of thing that you're referring to?
I'm not familiar with the details of the church, only that there are activities that were not considered to be appropriate, and I don't know the details of what they were. If findings are required, then you need to be on like the findings. Findings are a little bit amorphous, but they've got to be genuine findings in the end.
Okay.
Is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, thank you for that. And then, as not just the commission, but the council, the community has struggled with affordable housing, and you talk about affordable housing in one of your responses here. Because how does the need for even affordable housing, needing to conform to comp plan, zoning code, and environmental analysis? And of course, we can always change the comp plan and the zoning code, it's a long process, but environmental analysis, too. So, having to do with, you know, traffic impacts in particular, since that's a big concern, but also the community talks about the community character changing, too. So, how do you weigh and balance all that and have projects that conform to the requirements of law?
Well, in the end, they have to conform to the requirements of the law. If there's a secret part where you've got significant unmitigated impacts, the council can do a finding of, I forget what the term is.
Overriding considerations.
Overriding considerations. So, if the need for affordable housing were such that that's an overriding consideration, then that's a call for the council to make. But otherwise, again, it's, you know, you follow the law with what it says and work to find a way to make it work. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And there are, you know, in finding opportunities for housing in Palo Alto, more dense housing is what it's got to be, is what they're talking about, and we're being pushed by the state to do more, and if we don't do more, dire consequences perhaps. You know, the three problems in housing is available space, opportunity, and public opinion. And, you know, available space, it's nothing here. It's expensive what there is. Is it the right site for housing? Is it big enough? You know, if you do affordable housing, it's got to be a certain size to make it economic, and how do you find that unless you take a site where something's there? And the part about public opinion is the same thing we've just talked about. I believe that if any council were to try to impose on the city everything that the state says needs to be done here, that council would be turned out at the next election. So, there are limits of what you can do, and you've got to find a way, again, working with the public, to find out what's going to be acceptable with them.
So, I didn't hear you, you were on the commission for 10 years and council certainly, so I didn't hear you mention whether it's an affordable housing project, the most needed, or any other project, period, whether it's housing or not, compromise, or project alteration, or mitigation. I didn't hear you mention any of those. It's just like whether it satisfies the law or not, but I didn't hear those other aspects.
The law requires those options, or, you know, if you can do mitigations, you do them. If you can't do mitigations, overriding concern. By the definitions of what the law requires and those other aspects, you've got to deal with them. If you shortcut the process, if you don't do the findings, if you don't do the mitigations, it's not going to work in the end.
So, Byrne, I will tell you, I also asked this of Dina. What was the most challenging housing issue you ran into while you were either planning commission or council? You've done it all.
Boy, I forget the address. It was a project offer on High Street, maybe 800 High. Awful, awful. I had.
Did the project go to a referendum?
I don't think it went to a referendum. But, you know, I had people that I cared about and cared about me, and they wouldn't about and cared about me, and, and they wouldn't talk to me after that. They were sure it was going to destroy their lives. And it was an awful process to go through. There's one where there were benefits to the city, parking and other aspects of it. Some worked and some didn't work very well. One thing that doesn't work very well is publicly available spaces. You know, they just don't work out over time. But anyway, it was a publicly available spaces.
PCs.
PCs. But, but within a PC, to say, okay, we're going to have a square over here that the public can enjoy, and so on.
Right, right.
That doesn't work very well. That was a bad, a terrible process to go through. In the end, I think it was a reasonable decision. It did impact people, but it didn't destroy anybody's life, as they were feared it might. But anyway, it was very, very difficult.
I think it did go to referendum.
Did it?
Only because Deana told us. Yeah, Cory wants to jump in with one last thing.
And as we heard mentioned last night, that project is now massively overparked with tons of empty spaces. FYI.
Good to know. Thank you.
I mean, do those, do those friends talk to you nowadays, though?
Yes. Actually, their lives are not destroyed, and they don't mind so much.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry to stop us, but we.
That's already it?
That's it. That was 15 minutes.
Wow, you guys are quick. Okay.
Did you enjoy it?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you for all your past service.
You know, you mean like, you know, Brian?
Yeah.
So Brian Hamachek, I'll just check, you are here for Planning and Transportation Commission, good?
Yes, I am.
So you have a few minutes to say some introductory remarks.
Sure.
This will take 15 minutes. If there's time at the end, you could sum it up. But after you say a few more remarks, we'll be asking you questions.
Okay, sounds good. So I'm Brian, and I've lived in Palo Alto pretty much my entire life. Grew, I was born into a house right behind Coverley, and then I moved to Lowell Avenue, and then I rented a place over on Lewis Road, and then I rented from Oak Creek Apartments, and then about six months ago, I bought my first house over on Melville. So I think I have a diverse background of the different neighborhoods and the different types of people that are living here, renters and owners. So I think that I have a pretty diverse background in that regard, and I just love the city of Palo Alto. I met my wife here in preschool, actually.
In preschool?
Yeah, no. We didn't start dating then, but, yeah. But, and we just, we couldn't imagine anywhere else that we'd ever want to raise a family. So just in love with this place and want to make sure that it stays the Palo Alto that I've known my entire life and helped shape it in that regard. So open to your questions.
So starting with Cory.
You know, so a lot of our discussions are about big policy questions, right? You know, how much housing should we build? How should we change the rules around it? That's been a big discussion recently. But a lot of what PTC deals with, and often comes then to councils as well, are nitty gritty approvals or denials of specific projects, considering the rules on the books, the law, really a quasi judicial type function. People feeling very strongly that their project should get approved, and people feeling equally strongly that the project should get denied. Strong, clear arguments, both referencing the same documents on two or more sides. How would you work with applicants, appellants, staff, colleagues, your own independent research, how would you approach those kinds of hearings as a commissioner?
Yeah, I think that, you know, both sides can have their, their viewpoint, and they can both be somewhat correct, I guess, and they just have different views on this, how the city is. And so I guess, in my regard, I would kind of just take it back to my own experience of Palo Alto, and just how did these projects fit or not fit into that vision of Palo Alto that I have in my head, and that I had growing up, and is it going to help or hurt the city, I guess? Because I think that sometimes if a project meets the, it can meet all the technical requirements of the code, but not necessarily be right for Palo Alto stuff, but.
Tom.
I have two questions. Can you tell us a little bit about what Social Foundry is?
Yeah, sure.
And also, I don't know if you're familiar with the Fries site, with some planning going on there, and kind of your thoughts on that part of the city.
Sure. Social Foundry, we're actually, it's a social network called Nearby, and it's for meeting new people. We have about 11 million users so far, so it's an exciting place to be working. In terms of the Fries site, that, that's been going on for quite a while, as far as I'm aware. I mean, I, I definitely have a place in my, as a someone who does technology, I definitely have a place in my heart that loves fries, but that, there's definitely a lot of land there that could be put to better use. So I don't know the specific details of what the current state of those plans are. I know that they've been going on for a while, but.
Group started recently, group started recently to actually look at a specific plan for that area.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, definitely, I think that there's a lot that could be done there that would really be amazing.
Thanks.
Okay, Eric.
All right. Let me lob, let me, let me lob a good one in here. You mentioned the non-residential office cap in the downtown area, which Planning and Transportation Commission looked at and discussed and so forth. Not necessarily what the answer is, but how should the Planning and Transportation Commission consider whether to keep it or not?
I guess I, that's an interesting question to ask on that. How they should consider it? I guess they should be taking into consideration how it's going to affect the city, and whether or not it's going to be beneficial to the residents of the city. If, if that's what you're asking, just the how, are they going to consider it? I think that pretty much all the things that come in front of them should probably be considered in that way.
Follow on to that. There is a question, this is the last question, talking about the various documents, that as a commissioner, you'd need to be familiar with. You said you've looked at various documents at different times. The question, following up with, with Eric's question, one of the things that I see in watching the Planning Commission for quite some time is, again, personal opinion, it seems a lot of the valuations of considerations are based on personal opinion, rather than on these documents. So is that your experience, or is that okay? Or does it need to be reined in to be relevant to these documents? Or what would you have to say about any of that?
Well, I think that the documents reflect kind of the consensus of the, of the city on which direction it should go. And everything that I've read in, you know, the master plan, I agree with, so I don't know if there really would be that big of a difference in, in my own personal case. But I think that, I think that there is somewhat of a balance, but in general, the master plan should be, you know, the guiding principle, and not somebody's personal opinion, especially if they're radical.
Thank you. Adrian.
So thank you for applying. Something I think you've probably experienced a lot of Palo Waltons, talk to us about our issues around traffic and congestion, and really just kind of getting around. I don't think any of us up here, like, you know, have a silver bullet solution. But how, how would you kind of approach those problems in the Planning Commission? You know, when folks say, like, hey, you know, traffic sucks, let's not do this building, or when people are saying, you know, there's issues with bike lanes, or, you know, VTA is terrible. How, how do we, how do we like think about that, actually, in Palo Alto?
I mean, I think I definitely have an interesting perspective, because I've lived here without having a car before. I've, you know, used the public transportation pretty extensively, the shuttle. I bike around pretty much everywhere. I use my bike if I can, if I'm not going to be, you know, buying something that I need to carry back. So I, I think I have an interesting perspective in that regard, but there's some things that could be improved, like the El Camino project for adding a bike lane on to El Camino, I think is desperately needed, because that's one of the areas of the city that's kind of missing accessibility by bike. So, yeah. Does that answer your question?
I mean, I, I think, yeah, it's just, it's just always great for us to get ideas, you know, from citizens, potential applicants. Because I said, I don't think we have the, the solutions.
Lydia.
Thank you for applying. This is your second time, right?
I think third, actually.
Third, okay. Well, thank you for coming back.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask, you've grown up here all your life, and obviously, you know, retail. There was once upon a time quite a thriving retail around here, where you can kind of walk to, go. So how, how much, how much would you want to see that we kind of enforce our ground floor ordinance, ground floor of retail ordinance?
I definitely think that should be enforced. I mean, one of the things that actually got me to run the first time was that I saw so many places were disappearing in terms of retail, places on California Avenue, that I grew up and loved and thought were an important part of the character of Palo Alto. So, and they were getting replaced by, in some cases, offices, and that, that made me pretty disheartened. But, so I think that, that there's a reason for those ordinances, and they should definitely be enforced, yeah.
You do well with brief answers. So, pardon? You thought that was you? So as you look around the city, and you're familiar with Planning and Transportation Commission, what do you think are the very biggest issues that we'll be grappling with?
I think that actually, the transportation side of it is probably a really big one. I, I think that, and it hasn't been given as much focus, you know, recently, I think, in the Planning Commission. But I think that if you ask the average person in Palo Alto, you know, what, what's the biggest issue that the city should be tackling, it's probably transportation. It's just so hard to get around at certain times of the day. There's, there's a lot that is lacking in that regard, I think. And like you said, there's no simple solutions to these problems, and I don't have any today. But I think that that is something that is probably the biggest issue.
A little further. You said you biked, you used a, have you used the vans at all?
The shuttle, Palo Alto shuttle?
Uh huh.
Yeah, definitely. And also the Stanford Marguerite. And I actually, and I was working down on University Avenue at the time, and I was able to, you know, easily get to work. But a big part of that was I was able to live in the city, so that helps to be able to use the public transportation.
You mean in Palo Alto, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so since you've done all that, what we, what could we do to improve it, promote it? You know, I'll bet none of us tonight came here by public transportation.
Well, I think that, you know, there are things that could be done to promote it, but I'm not as familiar with what's been done recently to, in that regard, so maybe some, some of these things might have actually been happening recently. But I think that the average Palo Alton doesn't even know about the shuttle. I, I've told a lot of my friends about it. They, they've complained about, you know, needing to get someone, and I say, well, why don't you consider taking the shuttle? They don't even know that it exists. And, and they're also just kind of hesitant, because they assume that it's going to be something that it's not. And it's actually an amazing, you know, perk of living here. But most people probably have never tried it. I don't know. There's a way to, you know, encourage people to just try it out once, somehow, maybe some kind of an event or something. I think that once people saw what it is, they'd definitely use it, because it's not, it's not like a municipal bus in any regard. It's, it's very friendly and quick and on time and.
Yeah. I think you have to know, first of all, where to catch it. I think that's what lots of people say, is where is it? So that makes it, that makes it a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we? Okay. Okay, next. Okay. You've obviously done a great job.
Yeah. I, I, I saw the list of all the people that are, that also applied this year, and it looks like there's going to be some really good people, so I'm really enthusiastic about that. So thanks for taking the time to speak with me, and.
Oh, and thanks, thanks very much for coming.
Yeah.
Keep taking public transportation. We need some, we need someone to do that. Thanks again.
What was that, an article, like 98% of drivers support others using public transportation?
Yes. We always knew that the reason people voted in 2000 for the half cent sales tax was hoping you'd get out of your car, and, and, and you, and, and then you'd get out of your car and I could drive the freeway. Yeah, right, yeah.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, you're Thomas Siegel, right?
I am.
Good, very nice to meet you. So our, you'll have 15 minutes, and you have an opportunity at the beginning to tell us about you, why you've applied, what in particular is your motivation, and so forth. And then we will ask you questions, and if there's time at the end, you can do a sum up.
Yeah. How might, how long do you want me to talk?
Two or three minutes is probably enough.
Yeah.
But would you like us to time you?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
You should definitely feel free to cut me off, though.
Okay.
We want to leave time for questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. So, good evening, and, you know, thank you for considering my application. As a member of the commission, I look forward to, you know, supporting your work, and feel like I can contribute, you know, my perspective and, and skills that I have. I've been a, you know, long-term homeowner in the community, you know, have kids in the local school district, and, you know, well aware of some of the concerns that exist on, you know, quality of life and, you know, community. I've also hired a lot of local employees, you know, hundreds actually, who do worry about, you know, traffic and affordability of housing.
That's not a local person.
And I, I was a chairman of a local nonprofit that, a large nonprofit that actually faces an existential crisis and related to their physical space. And we, you know, very much aware of sort of the, the difficulties that local organizations face in just having a physical presence to, to exist. And so I, I look forward to, to supporting, you know, you so you can make the best and, you know, efficient decisions, which are revolving stocks which are very, very complicated, and, you know, don't have easy solutions. So I think that was under two minutes, so I'll.
So Cory is, Cory is our timer. So when your 15 minutes are up, you're going to.
So I get the bad look.
That was a minute after.
All right.
So Adrian.
So thank you very much for applying. Appreciate your application. You mentioned an interesting phrase here about incentives or additional restrictions and errors for pedestrians, bikes, and kind of trying to change the traffic mix, a little better mobility mix. Can you talk a bit more about that? Like, what kind of incentives you would see that might work here in Palo Alto, and what restrictions we may want to test?
I think it's important for people to get around, you know, to come from A to B, whether, you know, you're a local member of the community or you're passing through. And so I think, you know, putting up restrictions or sort of creating, you know, less traffic areas sort of needs to come with sort of, you know, a reconciliation or options, you know, for people sort of impacted by that. I always, you know, like the idea to kind of making kind of cheap or even free, you know, opportunities for local transport available, whether that is, you know, bikes, whether that is, you know, local shuttles, and, you know, just sort of incentivizing people that way. That's also, you know, the, the opportunity to kind of, you know, channel traffic, you know, whether it's sort of, you know, bike traffic or motorized traffic, just in, in different times, by sort of making sure that, you know, when events happen, or, you know, when, when certain schools get out, or businesses have certain events that you can stagger it in a way to kind of, you know, lessen the impact. One, one idea that, you know, I've, we spent actually quite a bit of time at our neighborhood meetings talking about is sort of actually creating more spaces for community. And right now, I think traffic makes this sometimes a lot hollow, so kind of having, for instance, a, you know, you have a Friday night where you close down part of the street, which we actually done in our neighborhood, to kind of, you know, allow citizens to come out and come together. Or kind of, you know, creating sort of other sort of event spaces that sort of, you know, not make it all about traffic, but really making it a sort of creating opportunities could, could be interesting.
Yeah.
Looking around. Are we wearing, we've been interviewing.
Yeah, out of questions.
Thanks for applying. One of your answers, you talked a little bit about Castelaya. And so if you were in the Planning Commission, how do you think about, you know, not so much a specific answer about Castelaya, but how do you think about? so much a specific answer about Castilea, but how do you think about interpreting the city's ordinances versus, say, say, needs of an applicant, and, um, you know, how do you make that trade-off of kind of like strictly following law versus kind of being creative?
I think there are four aspects that are probably important. Um, first one is, is a balanced approach, um, and that's personally really important to me, that not some get all, but all get some, and I think we have to sort of, you know, as a community, you know, we, we live together, and I think we have to find solutions that really make it work, you know, for everyone, so balance is one. Uh, the second one is, um, inclusion and transparency. Um, I think citizens understand that not put on these difficulties, not everybody can get their way, but everybody wants to be heard, and so I think it's really important to give everybody a voice, um, and sort of, you know, just making sure that this is somehow recorded and acknowledged, so that's number two. Um, number three, I, I do think consistency is, is really important, uh, adherence to rule and regulations is as well, right, um, and, you know, once you start sort of diverting from those or making exceptions, I think, um, that's also something I feel a lot in my, my job, like, the moment you start making exceptions, you have to justify, and, you know, it's very, very hard to not give others these, this exception. And the fourth one is, I think, um, what's called like science and innovation, right? I, I do think it's, it's very important to rely on, on data, on best practices, on expert advice, um, on, you know, like, other similar situations where people may have already had some learnings, um, and, um, innovation and creativity means also doing a few new things, like, I, I do believe that, you know, we're facing some challenges here in the community that are in many ways unprecedented, and I think it's important just to be, be creative and, you know, also take some risks in a, in a measured way that sort of, you know, solve these new problems in, in new ways, um, and so, um, Castilea is, is something that, you know, I'm, I, I put in there because I'm personally very, um, you know, very strongly about the topic of, you know, education, I, you know, the, the, the school that I was a, a member of sort of was, you know, in educational institutions. I do have a daughter, you know, we, we do spend a lot of time, you know, uh, on, um, on sexual equal opportunities and how difficult it is still, you know, to provide those, and so I think allowing the institutions to be thriving by being very, you know, aware and, uh, you know, cognizant of the, the challenge that it creates for local residents like myself is, is important, but, but in the end, it's about balance, so.
Um, yeah, thank you for your application and, and your interest certainly. Um, the last question in the application, um, refers to several documents that you'd be referring to as a commissioner, um, and at the end of that, though, your response is NA, which is not applicable, but they actually are the very documents that you'd be utilizing as a commissioner, so, do you wanna talk about that or that response?
So, so at the time, I hadn't read them yet, right? I spent quite a bit of time over the past few weeks, sort of familiarizing myself a bit with, um, general plan and, and other documents, but, you know, I'm by, by no means yet an expert, right, in those, and that's certainly something I would have to get up to speed on, um, but I, um, I also think it's, it's so sort of important to kind of, in addition to the expertise on these specific plans and sort of, you know, applying them consistently, to be able to focus on, on process and really helping, um, the city council or enabling the city, city council to make best and very efficient decisions as well, right, and so, that's certainly where I see kind of probably my initial focus being a lot more while I'm getting up to speed on actually, um, all the specifics, but I, I wanna be very, you know, having kind of looked more into this over the past couple of weeks, I think it'll takes a long time to really understand all the nuances and the details, um, and I'm certainly not there yet.
Don't be too hard on yourself, it takes a long time. It takes a long time, but I do encourage you to continue reading these documents, and I appreciate your application, thank you.
So I see you have the two goals here. Well, first, I wanna say, nice to meet you and, uh, thank you for applying. Um, I see you have two goals here, and one is the mitigation of traffic impacts, and then the other is the balanced process, right? Um, and you spoke about, um, you know, providing more options and different means of transportation, you know, whether it's bicycles or, and maybe free. Now, there is the incentivizing, and then there's the balance of enforcement when they start going awry, so how, how would, how would you kind of balance that?
I think, and this is sort of a theme probably in, in all my answers, I, I think it's probably a combination, uh, you know, both. Um, you know, we've, uh, we've seen obviously the rise of the, the parking permit program, which, you know, I, I think has probably worked out, you know, certainly very well in the neighborhood where I'm in, around Pierce Park. Um, I don't know what it's done to the people looking for parking, um, and, you know, how it's, how it's working for them, um, but actually, I'm, I'm always, um, more in sort of this is sort of general approach of mine, like incentivizing sort of behavior, long-term works better than sort of trying to sort of block or force people, um, and, um, you know, providing particular, you know, transportation opportunities like, and I can give you one specific example on electric bikes, right? They're obviously really, really expensive, but for a community like Palo Alto, given the size and given the weather, like, it's actually an amazing opportunity, I know how many of you have used electric bikes, but I actually think even with, you know, um, like, even if you give someone the option of driving a car for free or using an electric bicycle for free, actually, I think lots of people would choose it, now it's not economically viable, but, you know, these, the, these options are out there, and I, I, and I think we can, you know, at least, um, um, experiment with them, you know, in sort of controlled groups where you don't have to sort of do it for 50,000 people at once, but you do it for a few hundred and just, just see what works, so, yeah.
So I don't, I don't know if you've been following electric bikes in particular, I mean, there's a lot of venture-backed startups.
Yeah.
Who are flooding some cities where they become actually a nuisance, and so something like licensing of electric bikes, uh, would probably come to the planning commission. And so how would you view an opportunity where, say, five companies are coming to us and saying, "We'll give you free unlimited electric bikes"? Uh, you know, what kind of issues, what kind of questions would you ask?
Yeah, so, well, and it's obviously that the big concern would be them flooding, uh, you know, the city or them being sort of parked all over the place or kind of becoming sort of a nuisance or sort of a, a hazard, quite, quite honestly, so, um, I, I think it's, it's important to sort of, you know, limit, uh, the places where they can be parked. I think there need to be regulations how they can be used, right, if people use them on, on sidewalks and, and places like that, that, that can be, uh, you know, a, a problem as well. Um, so I actually like, like the idea of sort of, you know, making, um, bikes available for, you know, distinct groups of people and sort of creating incentives for actually also to, to take care of them, uh, rather than sort of, you know, being able to kind of drop them, you know, in, in different places, you know, randomly. Um, there's also, going back to my prior point about sort of best practice, I mean, lots of cities are actually learning how to deal with this or, you know, what not to do, and sort of going back and sort of studying up on this and, you know, actually not repeating the same mistakes of letting, like, a city like, like Palo Alto, five companies would, would be too much, right, and like, you never wanna be at the, be at the behalf of probably a single entity either, if you can help it, but, you know, it's, like, it, it has to be sort of controlled, in my, my opinion.
See, um, if there are any more questions, and if not, I'll give you a chance to wrap up and, uh, tell us again why we should vote for you.
Yeah.
About a minute? Yeah.
Yeah, cool. So any, any more questions?
No, I think it's...
Oh, yeah, you're done, okay.
Your turn to wrap up.
Yeah, so, again, thank you very much, uh, you know, for the questions, uh, for the, for the thoughtful conversation. Um, I'm, uh, even more, you know, interested after hearing some of the, um, possibilities and the questions that you posed to kind of, to contribute to those. Um, I do feel very strongly about this sort of being a, you know, very beautiful community, but also one that is facing a lot of challenges, and as it comes to transportation planning issues, and, uh, you know, if I can do my part to, to contribute to, uh, solving or helping prepare some of these decisions, I'm, I'm happy to, and, uh, again, wanna point out that I see my role less of one of policymaking. I really wanna sort of supporting you in making the best possible decision and doing this efficiently, to taking some of the detail off your backs, so, thank you.
Good. Thank you so much for coming.
And get home dry, I hope. Thank you.
Bye. Let's, let's, uh, take 30 minutes, uh, because, uh, it says, it says 30 minutes, but... If we just take 10, we'll almost be caught up. In which case you...
We gotta make visiting earlier.
We got a nice visit earlier. Goodness.
I will tell, no, don't tell you. But I'm applying for this because I've spent many years now understanding and working with advanced technology in terms of the future of transportation. And I've worked with land use people, particularly in California. And I've gotten a PhD in municipal code of Palo Alto over the last nine months. And I think the crisis that's here for you is a combination of housing and transportation. And the future involves a shaking of hands by both sectors. I came to Palo Alto in nineteen ninety-four to work for Apple's software division. And I ran their first developers' organization. So I've had the luxury of being exposed to the best and the brightest. I wish I'd known then what I know now about property value in California. You know, I didn't get in early. I was a poor graduate student who had many student loans to pay off from a fancy PhD and advanced education. So I am a long-term renter. And I think the Point and Commission going forward needs advice and counsel from those of us who have done this a very long time. There's no shame to it. It's so interesting because people look and say, isn't that time you bought? And I sort of look at them and say, really? In this marketplace? So the polemic I see coming forward for Palo Alto as I look for my next home is there is not a great deal of inventory. When I look at Redwood City, there's a great deal of inventory. It's new. It's priced appropriately. As I go up and down the peninsula, I don't want that. This is my home. So I think there are challenges coming. I know there is polarity versus building and data because the silly me, I was watching last night until twelve, eleven forty-five. Because these are the important issues. So please ask me questions. I have advanced degrees, ideal in crisis intervention. And I really think the city is at a point of inflection that they can go the right way or they're going to be stuck for many, many, many years. And I don't know what that right way is, okay? But I'm willing to dive in and try to understand better.
So let me just start out the questions with some of the, sort of some of the themes that have run through the night. Have you been watching planning commission meetings regularly? Have you attended them? Have you read any of the background materials that are listed in your application? So just give us an idea of how, what, how deep a dive you've done into this.
Well, I've spent an inordinate amount of time at the council meetings. I've spent an inordinate amount of time, more than I ever knew was possible, reading the Palo Alto municipal and zoning codes. I'm familiar with many of the documents. Have I been at the Point and Commission every week? No, I have not.
But you're very familiar with what?
I'm very familiar.
The process is and so forth.
Absolutely. I can't tell you I have because I have not. But I've been there when it was appropriate and I know the processes and I'm familiar.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Kind of related question. You mentioned CEQA. Can you, can you give a specific example of when you had to work with CEQA?
CEQA.
California Environmental Climate Act.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I worked for the CLCV. And I gave counsel on AB thirty-two. So I was in the back room during many of those negotiations and worked with all of the authorities. It's been a long time since I did that, Tom.
Which project was that?
AB thirty-two, the climate change, the dislination. My client was CLCV and the Sierra Club.
Let me ask a different question.
Yeah, but have I talked to them right now? No.
Okay. I don't know if you followed this in the news, but one of the issues that came to PTC and council recently was the intensity of use at the First Baptist Church. How would you approach an issue like that that would come to Planning Commission where it's an existing building? Maybe it's changed over the years, maybe gradually, maybe not gradually. What kind of questions would you ask and what would be your concerns?
I'd like to understand the uses and how the uses have changed over time. I'd like to understand the hours of operation, how children get there, and I'm assuming it's children, but what age groups are there at what time? And how it will affect traffic? And how the displacement will affect the after-school programs? I'm very familiar with the Mozart School that ultimately has a new location. And, you know, I've always been more familiar with the keyboard than with the other activities that were there. But if I was looking at a new problem like that, I'd want to understand the existing zoning, want to understand if there were any exemptions, and then I'd like to know the use.
Lydia, sorry.
It's okay. I'm not Dina. Thank you.
She also said welcome, great to knock.
Thank you, Michelle, for applying. You mentioned over here that you've worked, over the last years, you've worked in advanced transportation. Can you give me, can you kind of tell us a little bit about that?
Oh, sure. I was part of the founding team of the Hyperloop Transportation Technologies Company, now more commonly known as Hyperloop TT. I've always worked for the chairman. I'm a bit on hiatus right now. My last position was head of government affairs domestically. We're currently moving forward in the UAE. And we should have an operational prototype track in the UAE for the Expo twenty twenty-one. And so it's a little out of my purview. Domestic operations were much more, the work that I was doing. I'd worked with DOT to get a whole division for Hyperloop and advanced transportation technologies and how they can be deployed across the country, what regulatory support they needed. Were they a train? Were they an amusement ride? Were they a plane? We didn't want them categorized from a regulatory perspective as a train. There were huge tariffs. So it becomes much more expensive per mile. And I've been involved in all of those negotiations. We're kind of on hold right now, but there will be daylight again. You're welcome.
I think you're well-suited for the Planning Commission because of no other reason, you use a lot of acronyms. It's a prerequisite to use a lot of acronyms.
Oh, DOT, oops, sorry. Oops.
It's, yeah. It's very common. So going back to sort of the ilk of the question, because Lydia took my other question, but going sort of back to the ilk of the question that Tom asked, and given that you have familiarized yourself with a lot of different, of the documents that you'd be utilizing as a planning commissioner if you get appointed. You gave some of the things that you'd want to know about, using as an example, the First Baptist Church.
Right.
It's a conditional use permit that they have. How do you interface personal values, personal goals and opinion with the requirements such as findings that you have to make in order to comport with the various governing documents, such as in that case, a conditional use permit? How do you comport those? Feel free to use acronyms.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to, how to say it, other than you separate them and you do your job. You, I mean, with the regulatory guidelines in the Hyperloop arena, oh my goodness, I wanted to wash away all the land use issues. The lack of water in a test track that we were doing in the Central Valley, we couldn't get water rights. That was the regulatory authority. And as much as I was wishing and hoping and wanting, you separate out your personal goals and you work with the guidelines you're delivered. And hopefully you can change your few minds along the way. There's always hope.
Okay, thank you very much. Eric.
So suppose somebody has a really valuable project, say it's an affordable housing project, and they come to PTC and they're saying, we'd like to do this, but we can't meet the parking spec and build this building.
We can't.
We can't, we can't meet the parking requirements and build this building. Neighbors come in and say, wait a second, there's a lot of parking in our street already. We don't want, we don't like this unless it's fully parked. How do you, how do you approach that?
Carefully, really carefully, because you're walking down a minefield. Now, in this case, Karen, my personal beliefs would drive me to wanting affordable housing and getting the project greenlighted. But I think you have to work with the community. You have to find out whose goals, wants, desires, and find a way to find a compromise without not doing the project. I know that sounds soft, but I think we have to start doing more, God help us, community mediation because things are so polarized right now. It's a polemic in this area in particular because of Prop thirteen, because of the accelerated value of housing that's basically funding many startups and people's retirements. So it becomes a real contest about having a crown jewel and defending it at all cost and the future.
Having a crown, what's the crown jewel?
Your property. You don't want anything that will diminish the price, which continues to grow very nicely, better than any retirement account I've ever seen. So this is not easy territory.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for applying again. Appreciate the application. Quick question, you did mention learning about the municipal code and office space is one area. We've had a lot of discussions in the past year about limiting office space, whether through a citywide cap or reducing the commercial build-out over the cop plan's life. How do you, how do you think the Planning Commission should consider the city's economic competitiveness in light of those things? How do you kind of include the business community in some of the decisions?
I am Solomon, and I think every member of the Point and Commission and the council are. I mean, I believe that Palo Alto is the, no idioms, the jewel of the valley. And we have business needs that drive us. And we can't afford to not be able to house these workers or have space for And we can't afford to not be able to house these workers or have space for them. But it all has to do with common sense and existing regulations that can be changed and can't be changed. But the office space dilemma has been going on for many, many, many years. I mean, how do I feel with Palantir owning all the office space that I had over the last fifteen years? It's tough. I mean, every office I've had, they own.
We have to bring this to a close. The bell has gone off. Thank you so much for coming. You know what happens from here, so I presume you'll be tuned in next Monday night.
Again? Yes, I will be tuned in. And I really do mean that you have an embarrassment of riches. I've met so many qualified people out there. Other towns should have this problem.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, Jessel.
Hi.
How are you? Hi. Yes, head down to that end. And our system is that. Our system is that you have a few minutes to introduce yourself, tell us some of your background, why you're interested and so forth, and then we will continue until the full fifteen minutes is up, and you may get a chance at the end to do a summation.
Okay, that sounds great. So, I'm aware I had to prepare something. I gave it some thought, and I thought about what, if I was in your position, what would I want to ask me? And there are three topics that I want to touch on. My motivation for applying, my experience and my approach, how I would behave or act if I was on the commission. In terms of my motivation for applying, I'm a land use attorney. I'm very passionate about land use and planning, and it's something that I love and I do on a daily basis. Why I'm applying now is, you know, as I'm sure you guys are all aware, there's been a lot of women getting involved in government, and that's been very inspirational to me and kind of been the catalyst to take a harder look and say, "I want to get involved in my community. I want to do this," which is why, you know, I applied. And then in terms of experience, I'm very familiar with land use, planning documents, EIRs, maps, zoning ordinances, charters, you know, so plans, general plans, you name it, the processes of how planning commissions work, LAFCO works, water bores work. You know, we're always before them constantly. And I think that brings, you know, valuable experience to the table, because staff, which is already extremely overburdened and busy typically in cities, isn't spending time to train me or get me up to speed. I can hit the ground running. And then, in terms of, you know, my approach, I think it's, I'm not here applying with an agenda. I think anything needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. You have to look at the merits, take into consideration overarching policies and plans and other documents of the city before you make any sort of decision. And that requires really rolling up your sleeve, digging in, reading everything, looking at the documents, listening to everyone, having an honest conversation, and following the rules, because there are parameters and rules laid out in these planning documents. I hope that, you know, answers some of your questions off the bat.
I think you might be the first land use attorney who's applied to PTC. Karen might know, she might not know, but certainly in a while.
Bill Ross?
Yes, yes, that's right. So, just to ask you a little more background.
Correct.
Obviously, PTC and your background would seem to be a good fit. You have lived in Palo Alto for a while, and I'm looking to see, because you said more women should be involved, I totally agree, why in particular here and why in particular PTC?
So, I actually just moved to Palo Alto. We just purchased a home. I've been moving around San Francisco, Redwood City. I grew up in Saratoga, so all around the place. And we finally saved up a lot of money to afford to buy our first home in Palo Alto. It's where I've always wanted to live. I mean, as you saw in my application, education is really important to me. And I wanted my children to go to public school. Palo Alto, Saratoga, Los Altos, in my opinion, have like the strong public schools, so.
You moved here and jumped in.
And jumped in. I saw the opportunity pop up, and I love land use, and I said, "This is what I want to do." Got motivated and applied.
So, you haven't had a chance to go to any of the meetings yet or?
I watch them online.
Okay, good.
So, before, you know, applying, I watched a couple online to see how they've gone. I haven't gone to any of the Palo Alto meetings. I have been to San Jose, San Francisco, Walnut Creek, San Ramo, Los Angeles, you name it. Just because of what we do, we're always in Planning Commission meetings. And it's interesting to see and bring that sort of experience to the table, too, as to what other planning commissions have done and how they act or react, or what works or what doesn't.
You've been on the other side.
I've been on the other side, but we've also advised Planning Commission, so I've been on the city's side, developer's side, and opponent's side.
Yeah, good. Thank you for sharing all that. Tom, I think you were first.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. So, you started to touch on it. So, have you represented primarily developers or cities in your land use practice? And what cities do you work in?
So, we have not done work in Palo Alto. We are primarily a East Bay base firm in Walnut Creek. I'm actually in San Francisco. So, to my understanding and based on my experience, we've never been in Palo Alto, so there's no sort of conflict or anything there.
Do you tend to represent developers?
Developers. We represent cities, developers and opponents. A lot of developers, but we've also done, like, work for cities and advised LAFCO and advised, you know, I've been on sequel lawsuits, taking down projects, so.
And you also have.
Whatever, no kidding. Whatever pays my bills.
So, see you with Georgetown, with the Georgetown.
Yes.
So, you mentioned historic preservation. How would you think about historic preservation in a place like Palo Alto, where a lot of early Silicon Valley things occurred, but we also have tremendous, you know, value in our land and people looking to redevelop buildings and things?
Right. Again, I think it's, you know, I can't say I'm pro or anti historic preservation. I think it depends on a case-by-case basis. You have to look at the building that's being proposed, what they want to do with it, why they want to do it, the historic attributes, the meaningfulness of the property, before you can decide whether or not to tear something down.
So, you've, as you've said, you've seen a bunch of Planning Commissions and commissioners. Going beyond what you described as what you think is, would be your approach, as we're evaluating people, and we'll continue to evaluate people in the future, and evaluating people when they're up for reappointment, if they apply for a second term, I don't know if you want to maybe just give us two, three, ten, you know, just, what do you think are, in your experience of what you've seen, the standout qualities of the worst kinds of commissioners? And, and conversely, like, one, two, ten, what are the standout qualities of the best commissioners?
One step at a time.
So, I think it's, from my experience, I think a commissioner that listens, has honest conversation, makes people feel heard, asks thoughtful questions, is important. You know, I think it just sets a better tone for everybody, brings everybody closer together and to the table. You know, attributes that have not worked, in my opinion, are commissioners that come out, you know, without knowing all the facts or all the details, haven't done their homework, and just swinging and anti-something or pro-something just because that is their stance. That tends to divide people and polarize, you know, people, and it doesn't really work, in my opinion. You can have differing opinions.
Thank you for applying. Appreciate all this, the work you put into this application. You mentioned at one point, kind of addressing some of the mobility and congestion issues in Palo Alto, and I think we're all interested in that, as is the rest of the community. What would you say is like the future of transportation? Like, what do we do?
Well, this is just my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would love to see what, you know, applicants come forth with and propose. You know, there's been a lot of talk about transit-oriented development as one option of helping, you know, ease the congestion or increasing public transportation. I know that, I think it was in Walnut Creek where it was recently proposed, and it didn't work out, again, for reasons I understand. But we need to come to some sort of solution. We need to figure something out to make it work, to relieve the congestion that we have.
I appreciate that. I mean, it's interesting you said.
It's a tough topic.
Yeah, but it's interesting that you said, you know, like, what people come forward with, and I would kind of, I think one of the challenges, we don't really have people coming forward saying like, "Hey, I've got a transportation solution here." We do have, as some others will indicate, you know, a building project. We've got to evaluate those impacts. But on kind of the mitigation side, we don't actively have people coming forward. And so, I think, or I would love to see our Planning Commission play a kind of proactive role there.
Right.
Wanted to follow up on a question that Tom asked. He asked a question about historic preservation and historic buildings. And while you're, I'm trying to rationalize and understand because of what your occupation is and expertise is, but yet in response to the question, you didn't mention SEQA. And if a building is historic, then there is SEQA.
Ramifications that need to be.
Exactly, exactly. But you didn't mention that. And in reading through your examples in here, whether it's Castile Air, whether it's traffic or, you know, whatever, you don't mention the guiding documents or the requirements that have to be satisfied. So, I'm just, I'm trying to rationalize those two things, like, what your expertise is, but yet how you're responding to questions and what your essay questions are or essay responses are in the questionnaire.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense. I didn't mention SEQA. Yes, SEQA exists, it needs to be complied with, it needs to be followed. There are certain, you know, environmental review, EIRs, that you need to follow, produce, and they need to be evaluated and vetted and, you know, whatnot. And then thereafter, approved or not approved, or impacts need to be mitigated, and they all need to be looked at, the various, you know, sorts of impacts.
Yeah, and, yeah, so.
I didn't get into SEQA in my application. I didn't, I can bore you with the legal. I don't know, do you?
I didn't mean that.
Interesting to talk about SEQA.
You're asking more generally about kind of appearances?
Yeah, about, about how, you know, the documents that you are very familiar with, but how, it just, I was just, it was just kind of curious to me that they aren't, any of them referenced in your analysis here, like, you know, findings or, you know, impacts or the language of an attorney such as you didn't seem to be introduced in any of these responses. That's, I'm just trying to rationalize that, that's all.
I didn't write it like a legal memo.
Well, I didn't expect you to do an analysis. I don't mean that, but just, yeah, okay.
I just wrote it in layman's terms in a very, you know, easy to understand what I think, kind of. I didn't want to throw in a lot of legal terms and jargon. Again, that's, I've seen in Planning Commissions and others, that's not super helpful, so I try to speak in a way that's, write in a way that's helpful for the environment I'm in.
That's helpful to understand, thank you.
Suppose somebody comes to the Planning Commission with a worthwhile project, like, say it's an affordable housing or something.
Okay.
But they say, "But I can't meet the parking requirements and still build this." Okay, can I have a waiver? Neighbors come back and say, neighborhood comes back and says, "Wait a second. Our neighbor, our streets are packed with parked cars every night already, right? Please don't let them do that unless they park the whole thing." How do you approach that? How do you think about that?
So, again, I think that it needs to be evaluated on the merits. I wouldn't be pro the development or anti, you know, the development because of congestion. You really need to, one, look at what are the rules that? Did he have a question or should I continue? Oh, I thought you were referencing me. I think you need to look at, you know, first of all, the rules and the guidelines. What do they say? What can be done, what can't be done? How far off are they? What are they asking for? And then look at what kind of impact that congestion is going to have on the community and how beneficial this development will be, and then weigh them, right? You have to benefits, consequences. For me personally, I like to hear a lot of different opinions. I like to have big discussions and conversations before I make any decision. So, I want to hear what my fellow commission members feel. I want to hear, you know, what the constituents have to say, what has worked in other cities, you know, what staff has to say. They're on the front lines evaluating these, what their reports say, and then take that all in, think about it, and then reach a decision on, you know, what my opinion is and what my suggestion would be to the city council.
Could you have your hand up? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you for applying. Really appreciate it, and welcome to Palo Alto. So, as a lawyer, I'm sure you must have to do a lot of negotiation, right? Try to bridge different perspectives together, right? So, how do you think you could use your skill on devices topics, perhaps land use topics, to try to bridge gaps, right? Where maybe there's a, you know, dire need for housing, but at other times, there's also significant congestion problems with traffic, parking, et cetera. So, how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you think you could use your skills to bridge this gap that appears a lot, right? And people feel extremely passionate about it? So, maybe you could talk a little bit about that and how you would address it as a commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. So, despite what people typically think of attorneys as being extremely aggressive, I don't personally approach matters like that. I've had a lot more success having a softer touch and really listening to people and parroting back. "I hear you, this is what you're saying, this is what I think." Let's talk about how we can, you know, what is the right decision in this instance? You know, sometimes you do need to reach over and, you know, close the gap and cross the bridge. Sometimes you do need to make tough decisions, you know, in order to move forward. But that, I think, you know, as an attorney, I've learned that you're much better off working with opposing counsel, trying to reach solutions, instead of just going at it and butting heads.
Thank you very much. Your bell went off. Would you do us a favor? Just pronounce your last name again.
Rupavar.
Rupavar?
Yes.
Close enough?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you so much for having me.
We vote next.
I appreciate it.
We vote next Monday night. Okay, our next applicant is Craig Yana. I should have, I should, I should have Greg Renaldson. Greetings. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Great, thank you for coming. These interviews are fifteen minutes, you probably know that. You have a few minutes up front to introduce yourself, tell us something about you, why you're interested in PTC, and then we will have several minutes to talk to you until it hits fifteen. If it hits before then, we will give you a chance to give a summation.
Okay.
Good.
My name is Craig Nakisawa. I've been a Palo Alto resident since nineteen ninety-five. I got married in nineteen ninety-six, and we raised two boys.
Blessure.
The oldest one is now a senior at Cal Poly San Diego Spispo, and the younger one is a junior at Pali. Both boys have gone to Palo Alto Public Schools, Aloney, Jordan, Pali. My wife is a private music teacher, and she's volunteered at every school. She has followed the boys wherever they've gone. I retired, I myself retired in twenty fifteen. I've been active in communities, as a community volunteer in, for Boy Scouts, which my younger son is currently, and also Little League in Babe Ruth, where both sons also played. I'm currently still coaching, even though. I'm currently still coaching, even though both boys have gone. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to just say a little more about why you're very interested in planning and transportation?
Actually, my younger son, before his, one of his merit badges, he had to write a letter to the city coun, oh, he had to attend a city council meeting, and also had to write a letter to the Palo Alto Weekly. And he picked a traffic issue at Middlefield and Lincoln, which some of you may have received. And that, I kind of started getting aware of the transportation issues there. And also the, through the baseball team, I've talked to a lot of people who live in South Palo Alto, and they were concerned, raising concerns on Ross, and that kind of tricked my interest too. And I kind of, kind of wonder why these kind of issues are coming up in this town, where it's, it's, I think we, everybody expects a very high standard. Even from the casual, non, non-city government person, they, even from outsiders, like, I think, they hear Palo Alto, and it's, oh, Palo Alto is special.
Thank you. Thank you. I think Adrian had his hand up first.
Okay. So Craig, nice to meet you, and thank you for the application. I do remember the letter from your, your son, from you, and something that, as I'm looking at it again, you did a pretty good job of kind of documenting, hey, these are when we saw accidents or minor incidents at, you know, Lincoln and Middlefield. And then in your comments here, you mentioned, you know, customer satisfaction or citizen satisfaction with the Planning Commission. And I'm just wondering, if you were a member of the Planning Commission, how would you focus on that? Like, what do you think, what do you think that kind of citizen satisfaction looks like from, from the body?
I think getting feedback from the citizens, obviously. And good, getting good data, not, not just from the loudest people, from, you know, some of the best information is from people that don't even talk that much. They just casually mention something, and I think that's the majority of the people, actually. So you have to kind of have very good data. I'm a very strong believer in date, getting good data before and after something is, is going on. So I'm, I'm kind of worried that we don't do that too effectively, and I think that's one area that, that we can improve on.
Thanks for your application. Planning Commission deals with a lot of private applications, where you've got, you know, whether it's a homeowner, or a commercial property owner, or residential, for-profit or nonprofit developer, but you get a specific application, and, you know, very, very strong, mutually exclusive views about whether the application should be approved or not. You know, with both sides probably referencing the same documents, but interpreting it in a different way. When you have those kinds of applications facing opposition, how would you go about working with, reviewing the documents, working with fellow commissioners, working with staff, the applicant, the appellant? How would you go about trying to come to a conclusion in evaluating such a contentious property application?
I think it's, 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 it sounds on a surface that it's kind of a very difficult issue, but I think once you start diving into, into every aspect of it, and I, I'm very detailed oriented. I don't think, as I said before, you know, you have to look at beyond what the, what the present, current top-level arguments are, and then dive into it. And also listen to what the non, what the quiet majority is, is thinking too. And that's, that's probably the hardest thing to, to get, but I think it's possible. I think most Palo Alto's, once you start them talking, I think the, like myself, they're very, they're very open, I think.
Karen, sorry. So thank you for your application and your interest. You talk rather convincingly, I'd, I would say, in your statement here, that, I had it earlier, oh, goals should be stated and results shown as the things that you would insist on, and that decisions be made on good data. You're an engineer.
Retired.
Yes, yes, but you've still got it. You're an engineer, and that might translate at least to some, some percentage to evaluating whether the data is accurate, or helpful, or instructive, or informative at the Planning Commission. Are you confident that would be the case, or how would you evaluate if data is relevant and helpful in forwarding what your job would be as a commissioner?
Well, generally speaking, you know, data, any data is good data, but, or take that back.
Yeah.
You have to look to see how it was collected. You know, make, really make certain that it's really good data. It's, it's bad to make any decisions on just general data. It has to be good data. I've, I've kind of proud of my, pride in myself in my career that, you know, when you have 10 people in a room and everybody's agreeing on something, I'm, I'm the one that's saying, hey, wait a second, something doesn't smell right. And I think that's, that's what I would bring. Call it a disruptor, or, or just something that I feel uncomfortable. When, when everybody is 100% for something, I get really suspicious, and I give away seconds that something's not right, and just dive into it. And I'm not going to do it in an attack mode. I, I believe everybody is sincere in their beliefs, but if you go deep down personally, if I do it pri, you know, without confronting anyone, finding, finding out something, and then I'll raise it up, and say, hey, wait a second, this, this guy only asked 10 people who all work, who all work for Stanford or something. You know, it's, it's hard to be specific, but that, that kind of background is, is what I, what I bring.
Okay, so you'd look at the base and source and all of that of the data, then?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for being, for applying.
Thank you.
And nice to meet you. You mentioned, so the three Es, right? Engineering, education, enforcement, they go together in order for anything to be successful. And over here, you said that the basic engineering principles, I mean, so the very first fundamental thing of making sure something does come out, have a successful outcome, you said over here that they weren't met on this project. Can you elaborate a little bit more in terms of what that, what you see that to be?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Was that regarding?
I'm so sorry.
Oh, Ross.
About Ross, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, sir.
Well, I think, you know, I haven't dived into the material, but I read some of the materials, and I attended some of the, the city council meetings with the, with the neighborhoods, with the open, open sessions. And it seemed to me that there was, you know, what, what was, what was trying to be fixed? Was there a high accident rate? Was there, you know, a lot of close calls? And that, that didn't seem to exist, and like, if it did, okay, so then, okay, now we got to measure now. How many accidents have there been, or how many close calls have there been since then? But it doesn't seem that, we don't have the first set of data, so the, the second one, you kind of, you know, hopefully there's some improvement, but if people don't believe that, then, and I, I was just coaching, one of my kids that I coach, his older brother got hit at Moreno just a month ago. And the father was shocked because, you know, not that the actual design, but the police didn't even take the report. And, you know, how can, how can data be collected when things like that fall through the cracks? I mean, I saw the bicycle, the rear wheel was, the rear frame was bent, and the, and the wheel was, was almost cracked. He, he wasn't injured. But that's, that's, that's the kind of things that, that we miss sometimes. And I, I, you know, only, you know, because he happened to be a brother of, of someone I coached.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? If not, we can give you a chance to sum up.
Sum up. I just welcome the opportunity to serve. I've, I've served, I volunteered, I have volunteered over the, since, I guess, 2009 myself. And I don't take things half-heartedly. I, I really throw everything into it. So if, if, that's what you're looking for, that's when I am.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay.
We vote next Monday night.
Yes.
You're welcome to come here for listening to what I mentioned earlier.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Should I start with my summary?
Yes, sorry. I was just waiting a second, because Paul just walked out, but, but go ahead.
All right, so, as you know, the Planning and Transportation Commission has been dysfunctional at times. And if you were to select me to be on the commission, here's what you can expect. You can expect that I will bring integrity and dedication to the commission. I'll come prepared well in advance at each meeting, and I'll apply good judgment. And finally, I will say also that I will have a collaborative approach with everybody on, on the commission. I think that's very important. It has been sometimes lacking. And my proof points to this, you know, are the fact that I was for six years on the Human Relations Commission. And my colleague, my colleagues on the commission did trust me because they selected me to be vice-chair, then chair. In fact, they extended my term as a chair for another six months or so. I will, the second proof point I'll mention was my track record of working with the city of Palo Alto for 10 years as the organizer of Palo Alto World Music Day. You know, we had 10 years of success, and there was never any problem that's worthwhile mentioning here, you know, during these 10 years. I, I do have a strong interest in improving public transportation. I think that our region is starting to fall behind. You know, it requires a certain density level, you know, to make public transportation efficient and cost, cost-effective. And I think we're getting there now, and if you look at the long term, the next 10 years, 20 years, because you, you need to look at the really long term for, when you're planning public transportation, we'll definitely be there. And I see public transportation as a good way to remedy our problems of parking and, and traffic. You know, you can always build more parking lots, and you can always enlarge roads, but in the end, if you look at the long term, you know, it relieves in the short term, but in the long term, you know, you're not making much progress with that. And I, I will also say that, you know, I, I would be a proponent of affordable housing. You know, I do have three daughters, and they are on the East Coast now, but should they decide after the studies to come back, which I hope, to Palo Alto, I, I don't see how they could be able to do that, to afford housing here.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Claude. One of the things we've asked most people who have applied is, have you been to any of the PTC meetings lately? Have you had a chance to follow them online, or what, whatever you might like to do?
So my main source of information for PTC has been reading the Palo Alto Weekly, which I read, you know, every week. And I've been also looking sometimes at the minutes of the PTC.
Is there any issue that has come up recently that has really caught your attention, and you wish you had been there to participate and vote on it?
Yeah, no, the recent discussion about SB 35 and some of the measures that the city could take to, to steer, maybe developers in a different direction, giving them some incentives to develop some housing in Palo Alto, I thought that's, that's a huge deal. So I, I wish I'd maybe attended some of the meetings, but I, I read about it online.
Okay. Questions? Adrian.
So I'll take one. Thank you very much for the application. We very much appreciate it. Something I've been asking a lot of the applicants tonight, because I'm always looking for ideas on this, is, is what should we be doing on, on mobility and transportation? I think everyone would agree, you know, there's traffic congestion issues, it's hard to get around the Bay Area and Palo Alto. What solutions do you think the Planning Commission should be evaluating?
So, you know, there are some solutions that could be very local, that are in the realm of what Palo Alto could do. And there are also solutions that are, that require regional collaboration. But, you know, things that Palo Alto could do could be, you know, for instance, improving the shuttle service. And, you know, when I look at what's happening, you know, everybody is trying to find a solution, but working in its own silo. You have companies having their own shuttles, you have Stanford with a Marguerite, and you have a Palo Alto shuttle. And maybe, you know, we need more collaboration there, where, you know, everybody could be using, able to use shuttles from the employers, and/or from, from any employer, even if you work with a company that has a shuttle. I think, you know, it would require collaboration with some of these companies in Stanford. We could also, you know, one of the issues with shuttles is, they are only useful if they are frequent enough. Because, you know, if you have to wait half an hour, 45 minutes for the next shuttle, because you just missed it by a few minutes, it's going to discourage people. So you have to have a way to have more frequency, and maybe, you know, a better way of tracking where the shuttles are. It could be like on an application nowadays, where you can see, like you do with Lyft or, or with Uber, you, you know exactly where shuttle is, so you know how much time you have to wait. So these things are within the realm of possibilities. In Palo Alto also, we could do a bit better with bike sharing, having more sites, maybe a bit more throughout Palo Alto, and also scooters, for instance, or, you know, it does bring some challenges, you know, like when people use scooters on sidewalks. But, so these are some ideas I have for Palo Alto. I also think that, as I said, you know, we would need to, and spread more in the realm of what the city council does, is to, to work with other cities and the region to, to find some, some solutions.
Lydia, were you next? Okay, Joe.
Thanks for applying. Are you familiar with the single-story overlay discussion that we've had?
So, discussion of what?
Single-story overlays.
Oh, single-story overlays.
So this is in Eichler neighborhoods. We have an ordinance where, I think it's 60 or 70% of the people, if they sign a petition, they can apply a zoning overlay on themselves, and it's the kind of thing that would come to.
Oh, yes, 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 I remember reading about that, yeah.
So I'm curious, like, if something like that came to you on the Planning Commission, what kind of concerns would you have, what kind of questions would you have for a group of neighbors that maybe would come and petition for this?
So I think, you know, you would need first to, to make sure that if you get a petition, that it's really a valid petition, that everybody was really consulted. You have to also balance things like property rights with concerns of the neighbors. You probably want to have a lot of consultations before you, you make any decision. I really believe that, you know, you really need to talk to the people and the residents, and get their inputs. I think it's very important.
Eric, but Lydia, did you have a question? No, actually, go ahead and ask. Okay, Eric.
Really philosophical, and how do you think about the needs of current residents versus potential future residents, when you think, because we're talking about, we're talking about long-term, right? So how do you think about that, that balance?
I think, you know, for, for each project, let's be. I think, you know, for each project, let's be, before you, you know, you have to weigh both factors, you know. There are some measures that can help in the short term, but won't necessarily detract in the long term, you know. Like, you know, granting permits to residents, this is something, you know, you can always change. So, but I think, you know, it's important to, whenever you make decisions, not to forget the long term. You know, there's a tendency to yield to who is screaming louder, and then problems can accumulate, and to the point where you lose your flexibility to solve long-term problems.
Greg.
Thank you for applying, and also thank you for World Music Day, it's amazing, I go there almost every year, so I think a lot of people thank you for your work on that. I noticed you have a good technology background, and, you know, a lot of, you know, companies have started in Palo Alto and become very successful, like HP and many others. Yet there's a lot of pressure about the traffic and parking and congestion, all that stuff. So how do you think the city could balance it too?
Well, you know, there is this effort with TDM, I think, you know, that's certainly a good thing. Stanford, for instance, has been quite successful in reducing traffic on its campus. It's a bit easier for them, you know, they have more controls on who works there at Stanford than, you know, we have on citizens who live in Palo Alto, or maybe people who come from other cities. But I think, you know, providing incentives to people who work in Palo Alto, downtown Palo Alto, for instance, in restaurants or things like that, providing incentives so that people use public transportation. So this is short term, but long term, it's also, you know, what we're talking about, like improving transportation with, hopefully, you know, more frequent trains ultimately with Caltrain. And I think, as I said, we need to have more shuttles.
Okay, I am looking around, does anyone else have a question? Karen?
So how do you, thank you for your application, and also for your prior service, much appreciated.
Thank you.
As well as World Music Day. What do you think the role is of a planning commissioner in weighing one's personal opinion and values compared to the regulatory and guiding documents such as, you know, our code and charter and the documents that are mentioned here?
Well, you know, your opinion is one thing, but, you know, the law and regulations are usually not negotiable, you know, so they have to be more important than your own opinion. I think you have to respect the regulations. Now, if you think that some regulations are outmoded, need to be changed, you know, you can maybe advocate for that. But, you know, I would always view my role on the commission as being a team player, trying to work with my colleagues, not just, it's not just my opinions I would count. I think I would be always interested in what other commissioners think, because I do believe that you don't necessarily have all the answers by yourself, and you can be a lot more productive, but you can change your mind. Now, I would be open to changing my mind if I were on the commission. And I think ultimately, you know, your service is to the city, and, you know, you try to help the city council. So we'll always keep that in mind as well. So my opinion would be important to me, but doesn't mean that it's on top of things, you know. I would keep a healthy perspective.
Thank you very much. So this is your opportunity to sum up and say whatever else you'd like to say to us.
So, you know, I think I would come to a position as really eager to learn a lot, you know. I don't claim here that I know everything, I'm not an expert, but I would bet that many of you, before going, getting on the commission or on the city council, you were faced with a steep learning curve. And I enjoy steep learning curves, you know, you mentioned I work in technology, and I have been faced with that many times, and I do enjoy learning new things. So you would have my commitment that I would do my homework, I would do upfront a lot of work to come up to speed on many things that are not entirely up to speed now. But I think the intellectual capability and willingness and the interest, you know, to learn more and serve the city, you know, you have seen it during my service on the Human Relations Commission and Palo Alto World Music Day, that I do care about this city, I care about its residents, and I'll try to do my best for the greater good of the city and its citizens.
Great, thank you very much.
Next Monday night.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Great timing. So we have two left, Carrie Templeton and Elaine Wang, and Wong. Elaine, how do you say your last name? Thanks, because I occasionally mispronounce it, and I'm sorry.
It's not spelled.
Correctly, right. So it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you all, my goodness, you guys burn a lot of midnight oil.
We do. So our system is that you have a few minutes to talk about your concerns, your background, you're an architect, whatever else you'd like to add, and then the next, the rest of the fifteen minutes, we will be asking you questions.
Great, do I need to be in the microphone? Okay. So, yes, I'm Elaine Wong, I live downtown north. I've been a resident of Palo Alto on and off for the last, gosh, twenty-two years, if you count my time at Stanford. So, and I grew up just down the way in Cupertino, so I've been in the area for a long time. And growing up, Palo Alto was this, like, shining ideal of a place and community to be. And so about twelve years ago, when we were looking around, where should we settle? We found a house and fixed it up, it's the first post office of Palo Alto. And so I am an architect by training and by profession, I still practice. I practice multifamily housing, affordable housing. And I started just kind of, you know, paying attention. I think, Tom, you and I served on the Housing Element four years ago, and so I really just wanted to, you know, find ways to use my training and, you know, see how I could plug into the local community. Because I, you know, I always thought Palo Alto was a great community and a fabulous place to be, and if there's, you know, a way to get more engaged, I'm always interested in doing it. So that's kind of what brings me here. So along the way, in addition to the Housing Element, helped with the comp plan. And now that that is finally over after a very long process, you know, Lydia was on that comp plan process as well, took a little break, and now, just now that there's a vacancy on the Planning Commission, I feel like it's a kind of a natural next step, given some of the things that I've been interested in and I've been following, and I feel like I have the background professionally to also just contribute to the conversation. So that's why I'm here tonight, and I'm glad that you are all taking so much time to interview all the amazing candidates, there's a lot of good candidates.
So let me just ask one quick thing, and then Cory has jumped in, and I think probably others will have lots of questions for you. Looking at our city as we are right now, what do you think is the biggest issue that faces the Planning Commission and the city as they grapple with whatever that might be together?
Is it just one?
Or you can pick more.
Well, I mean, I think, I think housing is definitely at the top of a lot of people's minds. I think when you look at the National Citizens Survey, I think the lack of affordable housing is huge. It's always, you know, very high, seventy-five percent plus say that, you know, there just aren't enough options. And I think, you know, again, you know, the sort of like twin version of that is traffic, and I know that it's really bad in a couple of places. I think, you know, like you go through South Palo Alto at five o'clock at night, or down Middlefield, it's, it is, and down University because of some of these freeway interchanges, it's pretty bad. So you hear a lot about that, but I do think that, you know, it tends to happen in certain areas, and it's not necessarily ubiquitous, you know, in all, you know, all of Palo, all of Palo Alto is not waterlogged under traffic all the time, but it's bad in certain areas. And then I think the next thing really is just, you know, kind of governance in general, and being able to surface, you know, a representative, that's the word I was using, representative body of input, and making sure that we're finding ways, you know, people are busy, you know, either trying to figure out how they can stay in the city, or, you know, make a, make good living. And it's hard to get, you know, a representative sample of people engaged and participating in a lot of these key issues, and so I think that's probably the third.
Great, good summation. Who is next? Cory, and then Tom, and then Greg.
So you've been involved in a lot of the policy discussions, the Housing Element, the comp plan, and as an advocate. As you know, a lot of what the Planning Commission does is not just the policy stuff, but hearing specific land use applications, which are often contentious with an applicant on one side and appellants on the other, where the commission has to work as a body with applicants, appellants, staff, each other, and our laws to make a decision. It's not a policy decision. How would you approach those decisions?
Well, I mean, there's certainly legal frameworks, right, that we have to operate within when you're making a decision. I mean, we, you know, you obviously have to uphold these laws, and the Planning Commission often has to evaluate them too, and weigh in. And, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a fine, it's a fine balance, and I think, you know, but, you know, there, there, there is a way to, you know, evaluate the facts, and yes, you have to listen to everybody who's, who's in the room, you know, at the discussion, and take stock of the range of viewpoints that exists. But I, you know, I think, yes, like, you know, it's not always policy-based, but there are certainly policy frameworks, there are certain legal frameworks, and, you know, it, yes, there's a lot of judgment involved in making decisions, and, you know, one has to use their judgment and their wisdom. A lot of times, there's often like a financial implication for some of these decisions as well. So I think one just has to take all of that into stock. It's not, there isn't, you can't say in the abstract, there's one hard and fast way where I'm going to, one hard and fast way that I would approach, you know, it's gonna all depend on what the, what the situation and the facts are at that point in time in the room.
Thanks, Tom, and then Greg.
It's kind of a similar question, you're probably familiar with our single-story overlay ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So let's say you're on the Planning Commission, and a neighborhood comes to you, and they've followed the ordinance, they've got, you know, eighty, seventy, eighty percent of the people want to impose a single-story overlay on themselves. How would you handle that application, what kind of questions would you ask, what kind of concerns would you have?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, obviously starts with the basics, you know, what led the petitioners to bring something forward. I think that I would want to, you know, understand, you know, the methodology for acquiring the petition, and also, would also want to also ask staff very carefully, you know, what are the, what's the framework for, for bringing this forward? So that, you know, the decision that, or the recommendation, because the PTC doesn't make decisions, they make recommendations, the recommendation that gets made is within that, you know, that legal construct. I think it would be really important to obviously ask the appellant, or the people who are bringing this forward, you know, the reasons, the constraints, what their concerns are, and what led to this. And, 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 yeah, I mean, I think it's just gonna have to, you know, different neighborhoods have different, different issues, different geographies, different canopies, different, you know, different situations. So it's, it's gonna be, it's hard to do this in the abstract, right? Like, I think it would be hard to say, okay, well, you know, downtown Nora, a single-story overlay, when... I know, they're Eichlers, yeah. But, yeah, I think there are lots of different, you know, parameters that one can't, I mean, I can't really make an abstract assessment. But understanding the root cause, right, is, I think, fundamentally what's important.
Greg.
Yeah, well, thank you for applying, and thank you for all your service to Palo Alto, I really appreciate it. So, you know, as you know, the city faces a lot of traffic and parking challenges, and, you know, one, one kind of obvious solution is encourage more biking or scooters, right, to transport people instead of like two-ton cars. But even though there's obvious advantages, a lot of people are very reluctant to bike, because they fear safety, they fear, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that cause people not wanting to bike, even though, even though it could solve a lot of issues. What do you think are some things that you think the city could do to kind of make this more enticing, more approachable for more people?
I mean, is that a question of whether we, what the PTC can do, or is that a personal question? I think those are, those are somewhat different things.
You know, so, you know, one of the big controversies that came up, and you probably were aware of it, was Ross Road, right?
Sure.
So, you know, I think there was really good intentions, right? But there might have been some execution challenges.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we're blessed in Palo Alto to have a very flat terrain.
Right.
You know, it rarely rains except for tonight.
It's actually good. I'll take it.
So, you know, in general, we have a pretty ideal kind of environment.
Yeah.
Yet, you know, you know, most people will not bike, especially not like this.
Right.
And so, but, you know.
Except for you.
Except for a few, a few diehards. But how do you, how do you, how do you make it more approachable to the non-diehard, right? So that's gonna be part of the solution. Because I think you have a, you have a kind of a, from your application, it looks like you have more than just an architecture background, you also have a design background, where you can kind of think about creative solutions to tough problems.
So I don't know if you guys read this blog called Strong Towns, but it's actually a pretty phenomenal series of, you know, discussions about how one can, you know, evaluate their cities and make very small incremental changes. And the thing I really like about it is this idea of incrementalism, and starting very small, and like kind of working, working one's way, because these bike projects are very expensive. You spend so much time with, you know, the design phase, and then the engineering, and then you're hitting like seventy-five percent, then a hundred percent construction documentation, and that's all just, you know, like hundreds of thousands of dollars, even before like the shovel has actually hit the ground. And so one thing, and I actually brought the speaker to Palo Alto about four or five years, four years ago, Mike Lyden, who pioneers this thing called tactical urbanism. And so there are very lightweight things, very cheap, very effective things that one can do to help give people, you know, just an inkling, an idea of like how some of these, you know, different multimodal roads can, can work, and it just involves tape or toilet plunger sometimes, or, you know, like a straw waddle you can make. You don't have to spend lots of money designing traffic circles, you can just stick a plant in the middle of the intersection with a straw waddle, and kind of like, give people this idea, and kind of help them sort of imagine things. Traffic, oh, the reason why I started with Strong Towns is it started by this traffic engineer, who was like, the traffic engineering code is just, the traffic code is kind of crazy, and it doesn't incentivize design, and it doesn't actually help people kind of, all it optimizes for is throughput, and sometimes that's not actually what you want. Like, if you're designing a safer route to school, you don't want throughput, you don't want maximum speed through a road. So design is very important, I'm actually glad that you mentioned that. And so traffic engineers often don't take design into consideration. This other thing, the idea that I really like is, you guys know, you guys probably know about behavioral economics and Cass Sunstein in his book Nudge. I think there's a real important role that government and, you know, citizen, you know, citizen commissioners, board members, whatever, can play in helping to, you know, foster a culture of nudging people towards behavior. And so you can use, design is actually a key tool for helping to nudge people in certain, certain ways that are, you know, more beneficial. Like, you can also nudge people in a not-so-beneficial way, but on bike infrastructure or on traffic calming, there are a lot of things that one can do in a very lightweight, very, like, fiscally prudent manner, right, without sinking hundreds of thousands of dollars into the hole before you even put the shovel on the ground.
Thank you, Mary. Elaine, thank you for the application, a lot of good stuff read in here, I'll definitely... to read in here. I'll definitely second her on Strong Towns. It's, it's a great blog and series of explorations. Um, I was kind of interested in the idea you had here about clustering uses, parks, shops, libraries, workplaces, homes, in meaningful ways. And I was wondering if you would kind of, I guess, two or three things. Like, one, like, could you point to one in the Bay Area that you think is kind of cool? Two, where might that work in Palo Alto? Like, how, how do we get there, actually?
Um, University South, Sofa. Um, not a bad, not a bad set of clustering, um, of uses. You've got a lot of, um, great housing models, um, right next to awesome parks. I actually use, um, the little walkthrough to Heritage Park as a, as a precedent for a lot of projects. Um, and you also have a lot of businesses, not just, you know, retail, grocery, you know, small business, but you do have, you know, some, you know, commercial uses. And, and you've got people who came in like IDEO and they took over, uh, an empty warehouse and kind of made it a, you know, a center of innovation, um, for pretty much the world. Um, so that's, that's cool. It's a cool synergy, um, I think. And, and, you know, Palo Alto's always been that way. Um, I, I think when I first started working in downtown Palo Alto thirteen, fourteen years ago, um, I saw lots of, you know, cool, you know, uh, what's the word? Synergy, not synergies, you know, it's just happenstance, things that just happen because different people are mixing and, um, you know, they're coming up with new ideas and coming up with new, um, new situations. I think there are a lot of other towns that are starting to do that as well, right? So you've got Mountain View, you've got, um, San Mateo and, and Hillsdale, that, that whole area has done a really good job of trying to kind of like, you know, mix a bunch of different things. I think one thing we could or should do more is actually mix public facilities with, um, things like housing. Um, I think the library slash affordable housing model that Menlo Park is exploring is really interesting, something to watch near the train station. So...
I'm sorry, that one...
Okay.
There was still two people going to the dock, so I'm sorry we didn't get Carrie and Karen, but...
Oh, no, Karen, okay, sorry. Well, nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming.
Yep.
You know, the vote's next week.
Oh, thanks.
Right, next, next Monday night.
Hello?
Hi, Carrie.
Keeping you guys up late tonight, huh?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the early night then, I guess, for city council standards.
So, thanks for coming.
Hi, yes.
The process is that you have a few minutes to talk about you and why you are interested in the PTC and, um, any particular aspect of that that you want to call out to us. And then we spend the rest of the fifteen minutes growing you.
Excellent, all right. Um, well, I'm Carrie Templeton and I've lived in Palo Alto for thirteen years. I started out in Ventura and now I live in Barron Park. Um, I have two children who, uh, tend at Lonnie and I worked for the last, uh, little over ten years at Google as a technical program manager. Um, I left in 2017 to pursue getting involved in civic duties and responsibilities and opportunities to see if I could help, um, after the 2016 election. Um, I attended Stanford University part-time while I was working and I graduated last summer with a master's, uh, of liberal arts. I wrote my thesis on fairy tales. I know all of you want to ask me about that later, so...
No, no, no.
And, let's see, what interests me about the, uh, PTC is I think there's a lot of opportunity to do good for our city, um, in this, this particular commission. Um, we can improve the safety and efficiency of our roads, maintain the charming character of our neighborhoods, and prepare the city for future residents and businesses. These are things that interest me. Um, I'm also involved in the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan Project and not, still not quite clear if I can do both. Um, so that may be a question for the city council.
Legitimately?
Yeah.
Okay, not, not your own time?
Oh, no, 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 lead from...
Whether or not you'd be allowed to?
Yes, so I asked, I asked the city lawyer and she said she would advise you guys, so...
Okay, thank, thank you for...
Yes, yes, of course. All right, questions?
Okay, questions? Karen, and then Cory.
Yes, well, thank you for your application and also for, um, serving on the Ventura Working Group.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. Um, you said some of the links don't work. Um, I was wondering if the link to the South Forest Avenue Plan works?
Well...
Maybe you don't have an answer to that, but...
The South Forest Avenue...
South Forest Avenue.
So there's, there was, uh, two plans there. I haven't read that one, so I don't know if that link works. The, um, zoning one is dead, but I was able to find it through a Google search.
Okay. And, you know, we don't need to go through everyone else, but, but...
So they have links embedded in the PDF and some of them are functioning smart.
Yeah. So I'm gonna ask you about your, um, uh, interest and effort on the Ventura Working Group because it might give an indication of what you would also be like as a planning commissioner.
Sure.
So the Ventura Working Group, um, it's been a while since we've done a coordinated area plan. Uh, Sofa was the last one that we did.
Ah, okay.
Okay. And so, um, with that plan, we got new housing, retained existing housing, granny units, we called them for that project, affordable housing, a daycare, retail office. We got a park, yes. We got pretty much everything. Um, didn't get a, well, never mind, but anyway. What's that?
So...
Uh, but we do have a bowling green. Or lawn bowling, lawn bowling.
So, so the bar is, uh, a little, a little high for the Ventura team, for the Ventura group.
So anyway, so I was, I was just wondering if you had looked at that because I think it could inform your work on the...
Well, I will, but I haven't yet, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's, that's helpful, no, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, aside from the, uh, big area planning and the policy discussions, a lot of what PTC did, articles are just individual projects. I've just been asking most of the people tonight, um, what's your approach to that? You know, because in that, in those cases, it's less a policy question, it's more a hearing, right? Here's the application, here are zoning codes, here's the law, here's an applicant, here's an appellant, both signing the same documents sometimes and interpreting them in a different way and saying, you have to approve it or you can't approve it because of the same documents. How would you go about working through those situations, also working with your colleagues and staff, uh, and just how would you approach those kinds of hearings, uh, to make those, um, rule-based decisions as opposed to recommendations on policy?
Sure. Um, well, there's a, a couple of things I want to say in answer to that. The, the first is, um, to understand the vision. Um, I think a lot of times, um, if we have a shared vision for Palo Alto, then it's, it's easy to evaluate against that vision and see if, um, the requested decision aligns with that vision or, or conflicts with that, uh, vision. But, um, sometimes in Palo Alto, as you all know, we have different, different visions. Some people see a suburb, some people see a city, some people, um, disagree, uh, on, on issues, as you, as you mentioned. So I think it's important to understand the, the text of the codes and the text of, um, the documents that we're gonna be leaning on, and see if that provides an answer and if it doesn't, or if we need to make, uh, recommend a change, we need to do it in a way that's fair and, um, hopefully not make every case an exception. So I think that would be my approach.
It sounds like you've watched some PTC meetings?
Yes.
Yes. So do you have any comments on kind of the process and how you could, uh, you would function as a PTC member?
Uh, yes, um, I, I have a lot of thoughts. I'm not sure, uh, I want to share all of them.
So you have been watching.
Oh, oh, yes, I've, I have. Um, I, I will, I will throw out an example. Um, I, I just went through the, um, the November fourteenth meeting and this was where we were reviewing the, um, El Camino Real, a proposal for dealing with, um, traffic flow in a eight-tenths of a mile stretch there. Um, there's, the discussions that were, that were happening from the commissioners, I thought were good questions. I think the primary challenge that, that this particular discussion had was, um, the, the material that was being presented was not thorough, um, and didn't have a lot of the details. And so, um, for example, the, the safety concerns discussion, um, it was mainly around the intersections between the side streets and El Camino Real. And the plans that were presented, uh, were limited, um, there was two options and several less expensive, less complicated options weren't presented. And so that, that concerned me. Um, things like, what if we reduce the number of intersections if these accidents are happening at intersections? Or, um, what if we smooth the flows and align the lights so that we have less stop and go and, and less opportunity for, um, these, these collisions to happen? Um, what if we changed the lane width to slow people down, right? These are all things that are very inexpensive and may achieve the same goals. So one of the things that I'm hoping to, to happen with the Planning and Transportation Commission is to, to find a way to work with staff to have the necessary data presented in the bundle, in the packet that comes before the meeting, so that people can make the decisions. It, it, I think there was some tension with the commissioners, they were concerned perhaps that, um, they weren't able to go forward and get to the conclusion that staff was hoping for because there was a lot of missing data. So I think that's one process area. As a program manager, process is, is my thing, like, so, you know, that's, that's one process area we could improve. We could set really clear guidance for staff about, uh, what our expectations are for, um, for the material presented in the packet, so that we can have more efficient meetings and better decision-making, um, in the end. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wanting to add to it?
So, thank you for the application and for your service on the North Ventura CAP. Um, you mentioned, you just mentioned in your last answer about processes and you've written it in here, um, in your answer to question number two. Um, currently we're considering a couple of streamlining ordinances where we're saying like if it's an affordable housing project, you may not have to go to the planning commission. Um, and I just wonder if you have any comments on that, having watched any projects or plans go through the city. You know, what should we be looking at there and how, how should we be evaluating, you know, the benefits and costs of, of streamlining things?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, one, one example that comes to mind as something that exploded in, in terms of investment from the city council and, um, possibly cost as well, was the, um, enforcement decision on the First Baptist Church, if you guys remember that, last, uh, two years ago. And, um, you know, while we had some interesting discussions and we definitely got a lot of people involved, you know, if you, if you wind the clock back to the originating decision to enforce, um, a code, uh, the way that was enforced resulted in eviction of everyone. And that's what kind of spurred the rest of the discussion and how we ended up with, you know, um, a community center in a place that we hadn't even expected that when the first, um, code enforcement happened. So that might be an area where we can provide better guidance to the city staff about how we should deal with enforcement and should we, um, always take it to the extreme or, um, right, like evicting everyone could be looked at as extreme. Um, or could we find a way to give them a little bit of leeway so that things can be handled in a different way and maybe not result in, you know, two city council meetings and one planning meeting being consumed. Uh-huh, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I need to do a time check.
Three minutes.
Okay, good. So, um, Lydia?
We got to hear the girls sing.
Well, that's the bright side. I love it.
Very bright side. Um, so thank you for applying, Carrie.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted, I just wanted to say, thank you, it's not so much a question, but mostly thank you for what you said over here, the opportunity cost for the city council having to rehash some of these things. If it was properly vetted, the, uh, planning and transportation was good back and forth, as well as, um, asking for the right information from staff, you know, so I appreciate that statement that you put in here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So...
Carrie, Eric?
I was gonna say, you mentioned the role of the, or the, the participation of the residents in some of these kinds of things, too.
Yes.
Flushed that out a little bit?
Yes, of course. Um, so, um, try and orient this in a, a context of an example as well. So with the Arrastodaro Charleston Corridor meeting, um, that, that came right after Ross Road kind of exploded as well. And, um, I was surprised because I thought that they could have, have marketed this or announced it, um, to, to really show, um, learnings from the Ross Road situation. Um, so I, I went to one of their open houses, which, um, implied that maybe there would be some discussion and some opportunity to give feedback earlier in the process. And I was, I was pretty surprised, um, when it was, it was not a discussion, it wasn't a presentation, it was, here's, here's the plan, you get to look at it before we build it. So I thought that was an, um, that was a, a learning for me, that maybe we can find a way to get people involved earlier, to market it better, and to get buy-in, um, you know. Going back to my experience as a technical program manager, you, you do need to get buy-in. You can't just build stuff, you have to have it where people are okay with what you're building and they're gonna be excited with your product in the end. And I think that's, that's really where we can improve as a city, is to get people, um, involved in the process so that we're celebrating at the end. And, uh, you know, a more domestic analogy is oftentimes you can get kids to eat their dinner if they help prepare it, right?
So in order, so in order to get buy-in, so, so, so how would you, how would you work to get better buy-in?
I think that, um, using the, um, the neighborhood associations better would be a great way to do it. I've gone to several, um, different community association meetings and, um, rarely do I see participants from the city, either from the staff or occasionally I'll, I'll run into some city council members there. But I think that would be a great way to do it, is to perhaps have, um, someone, you know, designated from the city staff to attend these meetings and get to know the community and have a safer place for them to receive feedback. Because sometimes sending it an email is not gonna happen because people are worried about it being public and things like that.
Thank you so much. Um, is there a minute for her to wind up or...
Twenty seconds.
Yeah. Twenty seconds. Well, um, should it be possible for me to serve on both, um, planning and the North Ventura? I would, I'd sure love the opportunity. I think I can help, um, help us optimize processes and help us improve our communication and ultimately, um, help us have better quality decision-making that, that makes our city a wonderful place.
Critical question.
Keeps our city a wonderful place. Yes.
Critical question here. If you can't serve on both, if you learned that, which, what's your preference?
Um, well, it's ultimately up to you guys. I think that, um, you know, North Ventura is a, a pretty time-bound project and that it will wrap up soon and that Planning and Transportation Commission is ongoing. And so probably would be future opportunities for me to apply should, should that be needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, thanks for...
I would be honored to, yes. Thank you all for the time.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, with that, we are, as you know, going to switch gears. So if you want to take one minute or two for just a quick stretch, um, we're going to begin with our ARB candidates.
Thanks for ten minutes, sir.
Hi, Alexander.
Alexander, great to see you.
So, if you will just kind of sit there for a couple of minutes, we'll, we'll gather back in, in, uh, two or three minutes.
She's got to stretch.
Yes, seventh inning stretch. Seventh inning stretch. Nice to see you. Oh, a handout. Boy. I do, too. Oh, gosh, look at this.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Alex, you know you've got 10 minutes.
Yes, and I'll try to keep it to 30 seconds, just the introduction.
Go for it.
Yes, I know.
Well, it was a beautiful building. It is a building. It just had, it was misdirected.
I have a story about that I will tell you later. They had a very unusual ARB presentation. Highly unusual.
Given the company, I'm not surprised.
Yes. So, I've been on the ARB for the last 10 years. And the last term has been really interesting. We've got 13 awards on 10 projects. And the last time I had counted the awards, I think we had two. So, something has changed for the better and I think the ARB is working really well right now. And going forward, I do ask you to consider one last term for me. And that's mostly because I've volunteered for the North Ventura CAP Working Group. And I find it's actually very interesting to me. I've always been interested in how cities evolve. I included a drawing in the application of what Palo Alto looked like at its inception. And I'm also interested in housing. I've been interested in housing since I was an architecture student at Columbia. I remember going once to the Ellis Island Immigration Museum and they have pictures of entire families, like three generations of a family, living in one or two rooms in tenements in Lower East Side. And that was eye-opening to me. I grew up in Palo Alto in Crescent Park and that was just, it was a rude awakening to me. And then I would visit friends who are actually living in these buildings now, just as like single people. And you see, oh, there's no bathroom, you know, there are no closets, there's, you know, and it's just really, it was very intriguing to me. I've studied how zoning developed in New York City. And it was in the 1800s, 1850s. And it was really meant, the whole point of zoning was, housing zoning was meant to make it healthier, more livable, safer. They had, you know, cholera outbreaks, yellow fever outbreaks. Developers were building apartments without windows. I mean, it was just shocking, it was appalling at what was happening at that time. And so, I included some pictures of housing projects that I've worked on. Picture, the axonometric drawing is a fellow station in Seattle. It's a 400-unit master plan and I worked on 220 units of affordable housing. It's all centered around walking paths, a light rail station, and a two-and-a-half acre Central Park. Some of the things that have come before you recently were like reducing parking requirements for affordable housing. This project has that. And we tried to tip, in the projects that I've worked on, we tried to tip the balance so that the most desirable thing to do is to walk and take the train or take the bus. We make that the nicest way of getting around. There's parking spaces for people who need it and want it, but it's considered secondary, it's put in alleys, right? And it's just better design. So, and then closer to home, I have worked on 325 units of housing at Stanford. They are 300-square-foot studios. The firm that I worked at did six buildings and we built like over 800 units. And I just worked on two of the buildings. And it was really about giving students their housing choice. Up until that point, Stanford didn't really let students live. Graduate students lived by themselves in student housing. That housing was only built because of this county and the general use permit. They probably would not have built it if, I think it was maybe Joseph Midian or somebody had sort of forced the issue. Okay, so that's it. I will take, if you have questions, I will be happy to. If you look at the, if you look at the list of the award list, half of the projects are on Stanford lands. And they really have stepped up their game with regard to building design recently.
Thanks. And I don't know who designed those, but they're absolutely lovely.
Yes, there are two different firms. There's one firm that did the houses and then another firm that did those two condominium buildings in the back.
They're excellent. Karen?
So, thank you for your service and for applying again. Much appreciated. And what do you think is different? That you said previously, in the previous period of time, there were two award winners and here in two years, there are 10 award winners, sorry, 13 design award winners. What do you think is working at this ARB?
Yes, so I would say that the the board is really willing to push to get better designs. Whereas, I think at times when I first started on the ARB, a lot of members felt like if something met the minimum standards of the code, then that was good enough to get a recommendation for approval. And I think, I think I've heard comments, people on the council mentioned comments that the ARB doesn't have unanimous votes anymore. I think that, my take on it is that the board does all want the same thing. We, the board does have different, still has some different standards on when something's approvable and when something should come back for more, you know, for revisions. So, that's, I think, where you see the differences in the votes. But I think that the board is pretty uniform on wanting really good projects.
Quick follow-up is I noticed that some of the, a number of the projects of these 13 design award winners are Form 4 architecture. And so, are you finding that as you're asking for better projects, that the architecture firms are coming forward with better projects?
Oh, that's a good.
Or has that happened yet?
That's an interesting question. I don't know the answer at the moment. Here's what I would say. Most architects can only do what are agents of the owners and they really only do what the owners agree to. The development community in Palo Alto is pretty sophisticated and I would say that, and they do want to do, most of them do want to do good work. And they do try to hire architects who do good projects. I don't know, and I don't know if things build up on top of each other and you get yet better projects. But that list of projects, the awards, is actually fairly diverse. If you look in, look there, it's like Public Art, Best Urban Infill, Net Zero Energy. It's a very wide range of awards. And, but not all projects are doing all of those items. And ideally, if you're trying to set even a higher bar, you'd, you know, they would do multiple, they would get multiple awards for different things on the, so, yeah.
So, I'll just be brief. One thing I've noticed is Palo Alto compared to many other cities, it's kind of a different division of labor between our Planning Commission and our ARB. You guys actually have a lot of powers compared to some cities. It's really just design review. Are there any issues there you think should maybe be like switched? Like, maybe should PTC be taking a harder look at planning? And are there aspects of PTC works on that ARB you'd like to take on more?
You know, when I first started on the ARB, there was more overlap, especially with things like planned community projects. You know, in the last three years, there really has been minimal overlap between them. Because I really haven't had to go to any Planning Commission meetings recently. There's been nothing, there's been fairly little overlap. I have, I did once a chart of ARB and PTC, the relationship of them with different, with respect to different cities, comparable cities in California. It's interesting, I think you're correct, is that there are very, they are very different, they can be very different. And you have like Berkeley's zoning adjustment board is a whole other animal in to itself. So.
Thank you.
Alex, I am so sorry, but you were so interesting, the time flew by. The 10 minutes has gone. So, thank you so much for being here tonight. And especially for your handout.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
And thank you to the outgoing council members. And thank you, thank you for your service. You guys do great work.
Of what, the handout? You can, you can have mine. It's okay, we'll share. Are you Curtis Smoller?
I am.
So, come right in. You're gonna be at the head of the table. You have whatever length of time you'd like to talk about yourself.
Absolutely.
And we have 10 minutes all told and we'll fill in after you are done, after you've done convincing us that you have just the right qualifications.
Well, hopefully, I'll do that. My name's Kurt Smoller. I'm doing it the wrong way. I can't, however, work microphone. Anyway, my name is Kurt Smoller. I'm an attorney. I've been practicing for 21 years in real estate law. I've been, my, when I was a baby lawyer, I worked for the former president of the Board of Appeals in San Francisco and I was introduced to a large array of issues from discretionary review to architectural issues, to setbacks, to porches, to basically anything you could think of, hot tubs with nudists, anything you could think that would be in front of Planning or Board of Appeal, I litigated. And I was the one sent to the Board hearings. I was the one who was organizing people for or against a particular issue. I litigated in court after the Board of Appeals, Board of Appeals in a writ of mandate, or mandamus, as mandate, proceeding. Basically, anything you could think that touched or related to real property, light wells, easements, fights over spite fences, removing trees, anything you could think of that touched property, I litigated. So, that's my, that's me.
Thank you. Questions for our applicant? Tom?
Couple of quick questions. So, how long have you lived in Palo Alto?
I've lived in Palo Alto, I think, for five years, four or five years.
And, I guess, so I understand the background you just gave us, but how do you feel about, I guess, being a non-architect on the Architect Review Board?
Well, I think that, you know, you always need somebody who's not, you know, you want somebody who's outside looking in sometimes. Because the thing is, if you have everybody who's an architect talking about architectural issues, you're not necessarily talking about the people issues. And what might be an issue for an architect might not be, might be a separate issue for people in the community. So, I think that having somebody who, you know, who has dealt with the community issues in San Francisco as much as I have and now I'm now here, I believe that I would be able to say not only what the architectural issues might be, because I've dealt with those as well, but also what the human impact actually is of those things.
Okay. Looking around, Adrian?
So, I'll take a crack at something. You know, we do have a lot of buildings come through here in Palo Alto and some are contentious and others not. I'm just wondering if you can like point to, what do you think is like maybe a successful recent new development and one that's not so successful?
Well, I think that you have one that's kind of both. I think you have the garage downtown, the California garage, the California garage that has come through. And I think that that one for a while was very, has been contentious on both sides. I think you've had the fact that you have issues with parking that people talk about and traffic issues. So, that's on one hand has been very controversial about, you know, whether or not that should have been put there in terms of, you know, A, from a planning point of view and B, from an architectural point of view. And my recollection from reading was that the result was to take something that may have not fit with the, fit with the community and made it fit with the community by tweaking it. And it wasn't necessarily an architectural tweak. It was one that was, I believe, a mural was added to the garage to make it fit better with the area. And so, it's, when you're looking at somebody that's sort of, that's, you know, too big, too bulky or out of character, the question would be, how do you make it in character, not as bulky and fit with the community? So, I don't know if I answered the question, but I think it goes on both sides of that issue.
Okay. You have, let me jump in with one. You have called out a couple of projects that you thought were particularly interesting on the back. 1027 Bryant and then 350 Sherman, the new police station. So, which we haven't seen yet, but, sorry, I mean, not in its completion, but we certainly have seen many renderings of it. Tell me why you called out those two in particular.
Well, I picked them out because of the fact that they're the true juxtapositions of two completely separate styles. From my recollection, and I'm doing this from my memory, which is not very good as I get older, but what I remember was that the Bryant Street is a Victorian building or an Edwardian. I'm not sure, I can't, not seeing it in front of me. But it's a different style, has the turrets and basically it was done to fit more with the community that it was in right there. And the police station is in an area that's more modern. So, the thing was that these, you have two completely separate, they're not alike at all. And it's a lot like Palo Alto. You have the fact that in Palo Alto, you'll have modern buildings and you'll have very traditional buildings. And the question is not necessarily what, you know, what is, you know, from an ephemeral, ephemeral sort of idea of what is right, but what actually fits in the place? And what's good for the community and what, it works for the particular purpose? In this case, you had a much more traditional, I don't know, you're much more traditional. In this case, you had a much more traditional, I don't know, you're much more traditional, utilitarian issue for the police station. And then for a residence, or you had something for the residence. So you had to, from my perspective, the reason why I picked those two specific ones, even though I think the police station was a little bit controversial in, in a bunch of different ways, was because of the fact that you had these two completely separate views, sorry, two, two completely separate buildings. They are not alike at all, and yet they both fit the purpose that they're there for and the community that they're in, and they, they're, and they work. So my question would be, in each case, what are you looking at? Not just, not just from an ideas point of view, but what is it actually doing and how can I help with that process?
Okay, Eric.
Following that thought, can you think of an obvious counter example? Okay, one that, you know, probably doesn't fit where it is, right? And, you know, that we-
Well, well, there's one that doesn't fit where it is, but I really like it. It's the post office. I mean, I think the post office is kind of, you know, out of nowhere, you're, you know, from, it's sort of like this big sort of government building, but I lo- I love that building. Right? But for me, from my point of view, it just exemplifies why Palo Alto is great. It's because you have the fact that, you know, things fit together because our community is eclectic, you know, and we have the fact that we have a lot of different viewpoints here and we'll have a lot of different people who are looking at things differently. Even with architects, you're going to have two architects who look at the same project in completely opposite ways. So, I mean, I think that you're going to have a lot of, lot of people having, you know, what's the old saying, you have two people in the room and three opinions. Right? So, you know, that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm, that's what I sort of think when you look at Palo Alto architecture.
Okay. If there are no other questions, you can continue to tell us why you're anxious to do this?
Well, well, the reason why I'm anxious to do it is really because of the fact that I, I've been doing this for so long. And I look, I look around and I see all the projects and I see the fact that there's a, that it's a very contentious environment lately, I believe, in politics, even in our small community. And I think that I, I've been doing this kind of law and mediations and resolving conflicts for twenty years. And I think that's really what I'm good at. And I think that bringing sort of, you know, civility and a sort of, some sort of reason to this process in general, especially since I think I read a few years ago, things were really kind of different in the archi- in the Architectural Review Board. But, um, now I think that it's clearly better, but I still think that it's really important to be civil and take everybody's point of view and, and consider it and to be courteous to one another. Thank you all. Thank you.
I know it's getting late, so, well, please let your day- Okay, we're going on to, um, Carl Del Rio.
Oh, okay. Good. Okay, so Peter Baltay, how are you?
Hi, everybody. Good night.
Good, nice to see you.
I prepared a very short statement. Should I just start with it?
You just heard that the client, the person just in front of you has apparently dropped out, so. You're, you're, so we're running right on time. Well, so he's dropped, so he's dropped out.
So, good evening. My name is Peter Baltay. I own and am the principal architect at Topos Architects in downtown Palo Alto. I've been a local business owner and architect for over twenty years and have spent my entire professional career in Palo Alto. For the past three years, I've also been a member of the Palo Alto Architectural Review Board and have an endeavor that I find to be both time consuming and rewarding. In the past few years, I've given much thought as to how the Architectural Review Board can best promote order and harmonious development and enhance the desirability of residences and investment in the city as required by city code. It's clearly a balancing act. We want to process development applications in a timely manner while holding firm to our high standards of sign excellence and civic compatibility. To be honest, it's also a question of how to bring a diverse group of architects, developers and property owners closer to the collective view of the five ARB members, who themselves are really professional advocates for the city council and the town's residents as a whole. This is what I do professionally every day, helping to guide the dreams and desires of my clients through a myriad of budgets and bureaucracy, collectively producing buildings and landscapes of beauty and utility. To succeed, I need to offer a clear and enticing architectural vision, supported by a knowledgeable and experienced understanding of design and construction, and then to be open, collaborative and persuasive. These are skills that I believe can also be of great use to the ARB. I see a Palo Alto that continues to grow and develop, but with buildings that are respectful of their context and place and history. Buildings that are built of today's materials and technologies for tomorrow's businesses and families. I also see a Palo Alto that's running out of housing options for its ordinary citizens, a Palo Alto that few of our children can afford, not to mention our teachers and civil servants. A Palo Alto where operating a business is increasingly hampered by the difficulty of attracting quality employees due to high housing costs. While the Architectural Review Board does not play a direct role in issues of housing production, it's imperative that we, as we increase the density of our built environment to accommodate more housing, do so carefully, deliberatively, and with much attention to the impact new projects have on their surroundings. It's also important that we review and approve projects in a timely manner. Housing is generally not the preferred project for most local developers, so adding additional costs and delays through lengthy reviews, searching for the perfect will prove counterproductive. The answer, I believe, is to hold tight to the high standards our community has established while providing extremely direct and clear feedback as to what will make a project comply with these standards as early and as often as possible. I offer a deep understanding of architectural design and construction knowledge, along with the comfort in reading and understanding zoning codes and legal processes. The ARB operates within the confines of public hearings and required findings, and it is only by being able to assess whether a proposal is, for example, compatible with the immediate environment of the site, or whether it promotes harmonious transitions in scale and character, that proper judgment can be offered. Finally, I believe that after twenty-plus years of local practice, working with hundreds of Palo Alto residents and property owners, earning the trust of numerous planning and building officials, and I hope, the respect of my colleagues, that I am well positioned to help bring the many together to build an even better Palo Alto. Sorry for reading all that, but I've learned it helps to put my thoughts down first.
Helps, Pete, thanks, Peter. And, and one of the things that, and then I'll go to you, Corey, that I call out are your examples of architecture that you like.
Or the photos I put with the packet, yeah.
So I thought it was interesting, the Garden Court, which is now thirty-plus years old or, or older?
Uh, yeah, it's nineteen eighty-something.
Yeah, it's forty, forty-something. And then the next one you listed was the Excel, which is brand new and I think very attractive. And then the Design Within Reach, so you had three completely different kinds of, of uses in architecture. I, I admired that. Corey, were you waiting? Were you the next one?
Yeah, I do. First, thank you very much for your application. I'm glad that you're, thank you for, as I have to, to do this again, thank you for your service. Building on what you've talked about in your application, about things you'd like to see the ARB do to improve its effectiveness, both for pursuing certain high policy priorities for the city, like when you've mentioned of getting housing, especially affordable housing, approved in a timely fashion that won't discourage people from doing those applications. What are, what are some other things you think we should, or you would like to see the ARB particularly avoid doing? You know, what are the pitfalls that you want to make sure that the ARB avoids? And how can you help the ARB avoid them? And also, if you have any thoughts about things the ARB has been doing, if you see the processes having improved over your time or worsened or, you know, as kind of, as a little, any reflection on what's working or not working?
Well, I, I've found that it's just so important to give really clear guidance. And with five of us up there frequently, we all say our piece and, and sort of think we're done and the applicant, I know that because I've been on the other side of it frequently. You go back to your office and you think, what did those guys really say? And you're sort of puzzling it out, you speak to staff and they're puzzling it out. And two weeks later, the minutes come out and you're doing this ridiculous parsing game, counting votes and thinking about it. Win Firth, our chairperson presently, and I think going into the future, we're trying to just give a much more clear summary of, this is what we think collectively, this is where it needs to go. So on the one hand, when changes need to be made, you don't leave it ambiguous. It's really important to be firm, you know, you need to have underground parking on this site. And so instead of sort of guessing, three people said that and two didn't, you want to hold a straw poll and just say, look, the clear consensus is it's going to have to go underground. And when you give people that direction, as much as they don't want to hear it upfront, it costs more, it saves time. It's the clear answer. And you can, I've watched it go through three and four reviews before you come to that closure. It's painful, it's embarrassing, it doesn't get you faster to the same solution. And it just really takes persuading the rest of your colleagues that it really is time to make a statement like that.
You just addressed that. Tom?
Yes, you mentioned Win Firth. I'm, I'm curious how you found having non-architects on the Architectural Review Board.
Win is a wonderful person and I've really become good friends with her. I didn't know her before this, but-
Not Win in particular, but just the idea of the-
I think selectively, not too many people, it really helps. I mean, the stuff we do is very detailed and technical and you need to have people who understand that. You don't want to be explaining the code to each other or the way buildings are built and stuff. Right now, we have a pretty good makeup on the board because a number of us are fairly technically competent. Win brings a wonderful understanding of the legal consequences and a nuanced sense of how the town works, which is great as one member. I think if you had two lawyers, it would be a problem. Well, maybe two lawyers in any town is, I, I won't set you up for that, Tom.
She has a deep Palo Alto background, you know, so she knows us well. Adrian?
So, also thank you for your service and thank you for reapplying. You mentioned kind of clarity of feedback, actually, to applicants. And I know there have been a couple of times council has kicked back a project to ARB, more kind of provided comments, and sometimes, I'm not sure, were so clear. Do you actually, so do you actually have any feedback on how the council could absorb-
Well, with, with all respect, I think you guys are not doing a great job on that. I mean, there's probably too many of you and the meetings are just too difficult to really put it out there, but frequently, I mean, that's why I, I try to attend the pre-meetings at council. When you, when you have a hearing, it really helps to just hear, it's not the same as seeing the video or listening to it later, but just to understand it. Because in a sense, you're all saying similar things a lot of the time, but, but understanding what's going on really helps. But again, like I was saying for the board too, if you could try to just make a clearer statement of collectively what you're doing. And if you're far apart, hold a straw poll. And, and, you know, if you're in the minority, have the gumption to say, okay, well collectively we have to go in one direction. Several recent projects, four twenty-nine University has really suffered from a lack of clear direction, and now it's a mess.
I, I appreciate that. And if you are, you know, selected again, please hold our feet to the fire on that.
Tom, were you next or Kim?
So perhaps sound self-serving here, so do you think our study sessions are a good idea? Or do you think we should do action items? Or do you think straw poles are good enough to give clear direction?
Oh, no, I think the study sessions are wonderful. It's really great to have you folks-
But there's no consensus drawn.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to suggest is that do more, I mean, study, typically a study session, everybody says their piece and you're done. But if the mayor, if the person presiding could then say, let's come with a collective statement of, of some feedback, so the applicant goes away with not just nine separate opinions, but one sense of direction. It's not, you're not, you're not making a firm, you're not making a firm decision or anything, but just give them a clear sense of where they have to go. You had, just the other day, there was the apartment building proposed down in San Antonio, which is asking for a substantial variance on what the current code says. And I was at that meeting and I also left thinking, well, it sounds like you guys are okay with it. But why not just come out and say, in principle, this will be okay? And if you don't have five of you or six of you supporting it, that'll be clear. We have the same thing on the ARB and the study sessions, you just sort of say your piece and that's it. But the more we can give applicants clear feedback, we're doing our part to make things go smoothly. Yeah, it's nothing binding, really, I mean-
We don't address that in the study session, maybe we should do a-
That's what I'm suggesting.
Peter, thank you. Nine years, I mean, we're really going to get there? Thanks so much, Peter. We appreciate your applying, we appreciate you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments here. And you're being candid as well.
That's fine, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the last two. And, um, we have David Hirsch and then Robert, or Robert Florenz. Hi, David, how are you?
Hello.
So you have ten minutes?
Ten minutes, okay. I don't know how you can last through all this. Okay. So I've been before you interviewing for the PTC, but realized the ARB is a much better fit. So I would like to offer my services for that. So my, my passion for fifty years or so, give or take, is architecture. So that's why I've made this decision, to try.
I don't remember, David, are you an architect?
Yes, yes, yes. So my project experience has been quite broad. And I've had to make a lot of presentations to various review boards and neighborhood groups. So I've been on the other side of it and I've always found it to be very informative, very important to learn the process that way. So I'd like to reverse that and be a part of the other side of the table. From these years, I developed a philosophy, or perhaps you'd call it an ethic. There's a time and place for an architect to be bold and innovative, but for the most part, it's better to be modest and respectful. I believe the projects I selected, which are in your packet, illustrate this. The ARB must decide collectively on the merits of a project submitted for review, and I welcome the opportunity to work with all the members to help guide this process and also to pay attention to the public's concern. Okay? Your turn.
Thank you for applying again to serve the city and for your interest in doing it directly in line with your, your expertise. And I, I was really intrigued by your answers on number three, when you were talking about things that the ARB could do to improve. And you're offering some really specific examples. In particular, I thought the idea of a, a super committee with some, with PTC and ARB was, was intriguing, particularly related to coordinated area plans. And on number five, we said encourage and allow the ARB to be more proactive in proposing ideas to planning PTC and to the council. Could you elaborate on that suggestion and what you're thinking there? Are you thinking that the ARB, like PTC, would do more policy recommendations or how, how would you envision that happening in a way that helps the city?
Okay. You have some big projects coming down the pike here. Which is great. I mean, it's wonderful to have, see that kind of motion happening. One of them is the planning study now of, of, uh, what's the area that we, we discussed? Ventura, yeah, sorry. The Ventura area. And, you know, frankly, I was there and spent a lot of time there thinking about it and think that it is possible to have a, trying to reverse the project, process, and have a, a planning idea that is actually the start of something there. Seems to me there's going to be a lot of housing. The focus has been on the whole neighborhood, but there really will be focused on the Frye site ultimately, which is a big site, eleven acres. And so one of the thoughts I had, which would of course have to be flushed out, was to put a kind of a connector that connected the whole site from Bullware Park all the way through to, to Park Avenue and make it a pedestrian way. So this is a concept and it, I don't know how that could work through the ARB. It's more of an architect's kind, kind of an idea. But I would say that's my focus would be that I like to dream. And I think this kind of a dream is, could have reality in a neighborhood like that. I think we need to have pedestrian ways, we need to have, it's like New York. We had a, a railroad track that ran through town and we made it into a fantastic pedestrian way. And it has revitalized that whole area. So if you reverse the project and actually think- if you reverse the project and actually think what could be, could be done with a, for the public good, a public idea like this, a concept like this, I think you could weave in the housing in such a way that it would make a, a joint concept work.
Yeah, thank you for coming back and applying again.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so you said you're, you're a community fellow with Concordia. Can you talk about, are you actually involved with Coverly or just with the general?
Yes, yes, yes. Could I, could I talk about it in a text piece here?
Yeah, please.
It's been a fantastic experience. Um, you know, there are something like two hundred people. You saw the number of people there. Uh, and they have the honor to be called a, it's called a fellow. But really, I'm kind of running a, a single table, not a part of the consultant team. Um, we, um, explored program options to begin with. And, uh, that, and then we went beyond those program options to what are other ideas that you could, uh, elaborate on, on the program. And people came up with a lot of terrific ideas, actually. If you add them all together and, and put them in a, uh, mix them up in some way, and then you say, these are the, these are the priorities. These are the ones that everybody liked the most. Um, they have added to the program. What they haven't done is really focus specifically on what's there right now. And that worries me a bit because there are a lot of people committed to Coverly and are, they can't be, it can't, we can't allow them not to have that opportunity to use Coverly, you know, the way it is being used. It's really quite incredible right now, the way it's being used. Spent a lot of time, I did, looking at the programs that are there. So, uh, the next step was that they gave us some sketch ideas. And those are, uh, shown in a way that they fit on the site, specifically with interior courtyards and the connection of all the facilities around. And we had three, and, uh, again, by selection, one of them was really the favorite for the group. It's been an eye-opening, I just want to add, it's been eye-opening that you start the process by asking the community to come in, that you advertise it the way they have, and they've done a fantastic job of advertising everywhere around town. Um, and that you get that consensus opinion from a large group like that. I think it takes a lot of the pain out of the end of it where you say, well, have you, have you done your community outreach? And they, you can say, yes, we have.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying to see either linear or right on the slide. Okay, in that case, okay. So, Karen.
So, um, thank you for applying and, um, for your service on the, uh, Coverly project also, as a, as a fellow. Um, you, um, have provided examples of both modern and traditional and historic, uh, projects. And how do you see, as a member of the ARB, um, or actually the work of the current ARB, how do you see these, uh, projects interfacing? Are we doing a good job, a so-so job, or, uh, we could make a whole lot of improvements on how the historic and traditional blend in with the new, or actually, should say the new blend in with those?
Well, on, on, of course, I showed Ramona Street in particular, you know, because it was so consistent, that whole block. It's just a fantastic block. Um, but, you know, as much as you, Karen, like the traditional houses here in Palo Alto, I do too. You know, I have a new dog, and so I'm walking around a lot. And, uh, there are some houses in my neighborhood that I wouldn't have looked at so much if I hadn't really had a dog. So, uh, I think it's weaving pretty well, you know? I haven't really looked in detail at, at, uh, SOFA to see how, how all of that has been described yet, and I have to do that. Uh, but I think the, some of the, some of the office buildings that I see that are mixed in with the neighborhoods seem to be okay in scale and detail. Some of them are not. Um, and I would, uh, I would be objective about the neighborhood, you know, to make sure the scale was appropriate. I don't know what you can do when they have an FAR that they can build what they want on a particular site. I'm not quite sure how you deal with that, except to try to see that they, the architect creates a, a scale on the front of the building that's related to the pedestrian scale and has some relationship to the mass that's next to it, or gives it space in some way so that it can be what it is.
So thank you very much, David, for, for coming in. That's, that's ten minutes.
Oh.
Um, the buzzer went off, so, um, we appreciate your being here. Thank you for-
Okay. I would like to-
Your service. Thank you for serving, um, as a Coverly fellow.
I want to leave a text piece with you, but I only have one copy. Could we, could I give it to you and let you copy it up?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
What kind of art?
Oh, it's, uh, I don't know.
Cool. What do you think? Are they small? So what do you think about that one?
No, not that. So how many, uh, how many panels for residents do you have?
I don't think it's a whole lot.
Yeah.
I think it's only for PTC.
Yeah. So that's why people can't get a lot of-
Evening.
Hello. How are you?
Good, good. Thank you. So, uh, you want me a little bit about myself? But, uh, okay. Uh, I'm finishing my fifth year on the board and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Uh, actually, I'm a little bit unusual. I live in San Mateo, not in the city of Palo Alto, but my wife was born and raised here. We go to church here. I had my first job here, you know, that sort of thing. So, uh, about five years ago, a friend of mine called up, said, I really think you ought to, uh, you know, come down here to apply for the position. And mainly because I've always been the type of person that wants to give back to their community. And I was on the planning commission in the city of San Mateo, where I live, for eight years, but that's the limit of the terms. You could go two terms and that's it. And even though I've had a couple of, uh, city council members say, let's see what we could do to get you back on because we like you, but it's a charter city, so there, it's very strict about what you can and can't do. So, but, uh, I thought, well, what the heck, you know? It's not like if somebody called from any city around here, would you, you know, would you like to come down and, uh, spend all day on a Thursday or something, uh, doing what you think is right for the community? But those two, uh, communities, both San Mateo and Palo Alto, are important to my wife and I. So it, uh, so I figured for this, for Palo Alto, I would do that. So that's a little bit about myself.
Thank you. Adrian, Adrian and Tom?
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you for your service, for your application, for your reapplication. Um, so one interesting thing between San Mateo and Palo Alto is we both got kind of El Camino and tried to figure out, you know, what to do with it. Um, in Palo Alto, we are considering some updates for our zoning codes about what those buildings would look like. And I'm just wondering, you know, how do you think the planning commission should envision that? Some people, you know, in our community say it should be wide and set back. Others want more of like an urban canyon kind of thing. And I'm just, I'm just wondering your take on that.
Well, you know, El Camino is, is sort of unusual in that sense, that it is big to begin with or wide to begin with. But it also varies from community to community because in some communities, it's dependent on where it goes through your city. And in San Mateo, it splits pretty much right down the middle of downtown. So it's a little tougher. And so the, the thought has been to make it a little bit smaller and bring it part of the community. In Palo Alto, it's basically on one side of downtown, and there is somewhat of a border between one side of it is residential, the other side of it is, uh, more the, uh, the downtown area. So it makes it a little bit, uh, easier to, to, uh, to make a distinction. But the, the situation with it is here is that, and, and people seem to have a, a problem with that, is that it, it's a highway. I mean, it, it's a state highway. Uh, people think they can go seventy miles an hour on there. So it's real tough to say, well, for our community, we're going to shrink it down to two lanes. We're going to put, uh, boulevard type, uh, you know, sidewalks and, and just make it more of a community. It's tough to do. So it's, it's a very, uh, you know, hard thing. And also because you do a certain style, let's say in Palo Alto, then Menlo Park has something totally different. And, you know, it's, it's, that's almost one of those things that's impossible to fix. But obviously, I would love to see us slow the whole traffic down anyway because unfortunately, we seem to be, uh, and all the, the areas are like that, where they seem to cater to the car. And I think you could do enough to still make it a reasonable transportation hub, but still let it, you know, let's things slow down a little bit so people can even, you know, appreciate the community around them.
Tom's next in there.
Uh, thanks, thanks again for applying again. Couple of quick questions. Um, so are you an active architect or you?
Oh, yes. Uh, I've been, uh, licensed for about forty years. I'm one of the old guys on the-
Yeah, so you're not retired.
And had my own firm for about twenty-five.
Okay.
And I'm now in, uh, what my wife for years has been pounding in my dea, I'm now, I'm classifying myself now as semi-retired.
Okay.
It, which is obviously a benefit if you own your own firm, because you can control what that turns out to be. So I've really gotten to the point that we, I, we have, and I'm, I know going a little off the subject, but we just have two grandkids and they live in the area. So all of a sudden, it's like, hey, well, maybe, you know, this sort of thing. But I also realize that I can't just, you know, sit on the couch and watch TV. I have to stay involved. So that's one of the reasons why I, I reapplied again, because I enjoy doing this. And it now, uh, you know, is also, I can easily budget the time for it. Because unlike San Mateo, where you meet at night, you know, even if those go a little late, then, okay, no big deal, you get a little less sleep. But here, let's face it, you start at eight-thirty in the morning, and we've had numerous occasions, we don't get out of here till three. And then by the time I get back to my office in San Mateo, it's four-thirty. But, so if I had to get that day in on a schedule, that would be tough.
Right.
But I can now go, eh, what the heck, I could do it tomorrow. So it, uh-
So those long meetings-
It's a whole lot easier for me, absolutely.
Those long meetings may relate to my next question, which is, what was the most difficult project you've seen here in the last couple of years? And what can we do to-
Most difficult?
Streamline or make that better?
Well, you know, difficult, it has various ways of describing it. That could be, uh, difficult in, it took us twelve times to get what we want, which is diff-
Yeah.
But it's also, I mean, in all fairness, uh, probably the, the one that jumps out immediately is 429 University. You know, I mean, that one actually was just about started when I first came on. And, uh, so I mean, it's been a while. And so initially, the concept, I felt the, the architecture was nice, but unfortunately, it didn't fit in the location it was. So I mean, there are two ways to look at a building. If you set it aside in a, you know, a, a no context, it could be a beautiful building. Then when you place it somewhere, all of a sudden, it may or may not fit. And unfortunately, the designs on that building has changed five or six times, and I really don't think they've gotten better over the years. It, uh, you know, they've changed so much. So that's probably one, I'd say, that's been the most troubling.
Yeah, thanks. Um, thanks for reapplying and doing this and joining us at this hour tonight. Um, I just, you, you've been doing this for five years. I'm curious, you know, what, what's your thoughts on what's working well on the ARB now and, and what maybe ought to, you could, could change a little bit?
A lot of it, uh-
Because my impression is that ARB is working pretty well right now.
I, I agree. I, I definitely think it is. And a lot of that just sometimes is just, I mean, I hate to say it's just dumb luck, but, you know, well, I mean, and a lot of it is, it's because, it's because of the, the five people that make it up. It, uh, we now have a pretty good board that seems to work well together. And, uh, yeah, it's been very, I think, successful. And it's funny because, you know, we get the packet and I'll sit there and review it. And, uh, I'll go, gee, I, you know, I don't like this or don't like that. It's, and then you think, ah, that's probably only me thinking that way, whatever. So you, you get to the meeting and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, wait a minute, you know, Peter thinks the same way I do or whatever, not, and all of a sudden, it's like, well, then I guess I was right in my first thought, that sort of thing. So we seem to come to a pretty good conclusion. You know, it, it's got to be horrible for, you know, a city council, if you have a board or a planning commission that always comes across at three, two, or something like that. Because you look at it and go, well, they can't even make up their mind or decide what they want. I mean, it would, you know, we'd be ideal if all of them came out five-zero, but even if four-one is a pretty good idea that, uh, you know, if something happens. But, but the, the benefit also that the ARB has is that the type of decisions, or at least the, uh, the way I see it is, is, uh, I've, on a fairly, I should say regularly, but it's not unusual for me to vote against a project. And that's not so much because I don't like it, but in many cases, it's because I don't think it went far enough. Or I'm not as happy as I could be if they would only make this change or that change. So you have to then look at it and say, okay, realistically, the way I see the other four people doing it, it will more than likely pass, which is probably the right thing to have happen. But I want to let people know that I'm not happy with as far as we want, we could have gone further. You know, that sort of thing. So you, you, you vote against it knowing that it will pass, but I wish we could have done, and maybe I'd like the, you know, the developers, uh, who, let's face it, having been in this game long enough, their intention is they spend the least amount of money, you know, to get something that's the biggest you can for the least amount of money, and eh, as long as they're happy with it, who cares? And everyone fights against that. And, you know, I try and push as hard as possible to get the best we can. We try and set a certain level in a community. And then, uh, you say, sorry, if you want to play at our, uh, at our, uh, ball field, you got to come up to a certain level. And it takes a while for people to begin to understand that. And if a team works together, which ours seems to do, I think that's becoming more evident. Because I think we're getting a lot of changes that we are asking for that actually come around and happen. So it, I've been real happy with that.
Thanks so much for coming. I know you, you are our last and it's really late.
And, yeah.
And we were-
Yeah, I don't blame you because, I mean, apparently you've been here since five o'clock, right? So it, uh-
Yeah, we, we went home just, we, we, we went home briefly after last night and came back again, right?
Oh, did you? Exactly. It's one of those.
Well, and part of this group was in another meeting this afternoon as well.
Oh, jeez. Okay.
So it's, it's been, um, it's been a full day.
I can imagine.
Thank you so much for coming.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. You're quite welcome.
That's your ten minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, everyone. Um, thank you all. And just a reminder, we will vote on everyone on next Monday night.
Do you guys want to talk about adjourned?
Pardon?
Are we adjourned?
You are adjourned, yes. Um, I'm just saying, thank you. Thank you for making it to the end.